Okay, welcome. For those watching at home, most of us are unmasked here at City Hall.
Recording in progress.
To be clear for the public, we have all been tested today for COVID. And our meeting is inside, but is not open to the public. And we are not going to leave this room without masks on. Counsel, I do have an agenda add for today that is not on our agenda because today we received an email from Sound Cities Association requesting a 5:00 p.m. deadline to sign on to an Association of Washington Cities letter relative to the Public Works Assistance Fund. So is counsel, does counsel approve this being added to our agenda right out of the gate here so we can just square that away?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we will add that onto the agenda and we'll tackle that first thing. But so today's meeting is not accessible to the public pursuant to Governor's Emergency Order or Proclamation, excuse me, 20-28. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. So counsel, let's tackle that item from AWC. I did forward that to everyone. I think most of you already had it in front of you. And I can pull up and read the verbiage. Says earlier this week, AWC reported that the Public Works Assistance account, oh, I just scrolled right off of it when I tried to zoom in on it. That's, hang on. Sorry. Okay, here we go again. The Public Works Assistance account is at risk for being swept. In response to the widespread backlash to the proposals export fuel tax, a major source of revenue for the Move Ahead Washington package, the House has amended the package to remove the tax and backfill the budget with 100 million annually in funds from the Public Works Assistance account. AWC has been clear in communicating to legislators, while we support the underlying goal of passing a transportation package, we strongly oppose the use of the Public Works Assistance account funds to backfill state obligations. So counsel, again, we've been asked to sign on to the Association of Washington Cities letter in opposition of this by 5:00 p.m. today. So I would entertain a motion on this.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? And counsel will probably just need to, if you can just tilt your name till up, that will let me know that you want to speak on this. Counsel member, how?
I'd like to understand what the Public Works Assistance program actually is.
Mr. City Manager, can you, I don't have that detailed enough, or maybe Mr. Sugg is well-versed on the PWAA and might be able to speak to why it is important to cities in terms of accessing funds for our road projects?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And counsel, Mike Sugg, senior management analyst for the City Manager's Office. I don't have a deep understanding of the Public Works Assistance account, but what I do know is that the city of Sammamish did utilize this account back in, I believe, the early 2000s to construct major improvements to 28th Avenue. And basically what it allowed us to do is to receive a loan from the state at an extremely low interest rate. And basically, the account is a, something along the lines of a revolving loan account. So as funds are paid out to cities, as those repayments come in from city projects, those are added back into the account and they are re-loaned back out for other city projects. So it's basically a way for cities to finance big capital projects at a low interest rate backed by the state.
I can also add some additional information. This in the AWC letter that is linked in your email there, but it says, "In recent years, the PWAA has awarded funds for projects like the Fairview Avenue North Bridge replacement in Seattle, wastewater treatment plant facility improvements in North Bend, and repairs to the water system of Malton after the 2020 Bab Road wildfire. However, while these critical projects have received funding support from PWAA, many other projects have not. This is because the need far outpace availability of funds. Currently, the Public Works Board has 1 billion in vital projects that can complete construction within the next four years only if funding is secured." Counsel member Moran.
Yeah, the little skinny on it is, it says it's used to make loans and grants to give financial guarantees to local governments for public works projects.
We do. Is there any other discussion? Okay, then the motion on the floor is to sign on to the AWC letter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we will sign on to that AWC letter. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff will ensure that AWC gets contacted with our decision.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, now we can reconvene on our regularly scheduled program here, which is our city council retreat, day one for Friday, March 4th, 2022. For those of us here today, my hope is that we can learn more about how we work so that we can work better together. We're all here for the benefit of creating policy that translates into benefits for the community we represent. So my hope is that we can better understand what makes each of us tick and our underlying personalities that may help us better communicate with one another. And now I'm going to turn it over to Wendy Fraser, our facilitator.
Thanks, Kristi. Hi, everyone. It's great to be here today, really, truly, in person. And I look forward to spending the next several hours with you with an agenda design that you provided when we had our interviews and the things that you offered, that you wanted to get to know one another better and perhaps let's consider using a personality instrument. And so we're using the Myers-Briggs type indicator for that. And we're talking a little bit about the elements within that and how we can use that to better perhaps our conversations, the data we collect, the decisions that you make, and just try to make it kind of fun. So that was the other part that you, that you offered, is that sometimes things are really serious and there's a lot of very serious matters that you take care of and sometimes a little levity can help too. That's the MBTI. And then the other part that we'll spend time this afternoon is learning from differences. It seems like a wonderful connection to when we talked last time on the 18th around when we give input and discuss certain matters, you know? How do we go about doing that in a way that is respectful and, you know, the tone and the questions and different things that you offered? So I've got some information on that and I've got some tools. My intention is to not just give you a bunch of tools. I thought, you know, we'd just kind of see what's emerging in the group and what might be useful. I have a couple of go-to ones that, for me, have been really useful, really, really useful over the years. And sometimes when groups learn that together, then you can activate that when you need to. So that's the, the design for our time. I also have, like I said, some additional things based on our conversation. So I'm armed with a little bit more tools and stuff that might be of service. But this is your time. I am truly here to partner with you, to help you have this, this connection. So like anything, I love getting everybody's voice in the room first. Let's do a check-in. And I, I think it would be lovely to hear what is a piece of advice or a quote, a piece of advice that you've been given that has really connected with you, right? Or a quote that you think about that really matters to you. So share one of those, either a piece of advice or a quote that is meaningful to you and give us a why that might be. And then you call on the next person until everybody here has had a chance. So we'll just kind of concentrate on folks, anybody who's kind of sitting at the table here. So that includes Scott and Dave and myself, along with the six council members. So who wants to start?
I can start.
Please.
Fear is the mind killer. And it's a great quote because the reason you don't do things sometimes is fear will stop you and it's out of dune. So it's not exactly a famous, you know, philosopher here, but I found it very powerful and very helpful.
Who would you like to hear from?
Karen Moran.
It is daytime television.
Is that your quote?
No. When she said go to regular programming, the first thing I thought of was a commercial. Okay, well, the quote that I always think of whenever somebody says a quote is one that I was told way back in nursing school and I really do think of all the time is, and I swear I do live by it, which is, "Don't let the bastards get you down." And that is what I honestly live by. If you, honestly, if something goes wrong this time, get it, get it right the next time. Don't let it bug you the first time through. You'll get it the next time around. I mean, and I learned that in, I swear, the first day on the floor of nursing school. Amy.
Mine's probably more recent. I heard this maybe a couple of years ago. It was, "Don't wait for life to be," or "Don't, don't wait for things to be easy before you're happy." I think we spend a lot of time, you know, waiting for things to get easier or less hard. And, and it's just, I don't know, I just think it's a good mindset to, you know, be So I am going to ask Kristi.
So I think originally when this question came out about a quote, it was from someone you admire or someone you look up to. And so this one is from my brother and it is, "Deploy the Phelps Doctrine. He didn't win 28 gold medals swimming in someone else's lane." Counsel member Trina.
Do unto others as you'd have them do unto you. Pretty much live by the golden rule, try to. Deputy Mayor Clark.
Okay, I just Googled good quotes for teams because I don't.
Hey, it's all right.
This is from my favorite, Michael Jordan. Talent wins games, but teamwork and intelligence wins championships.
You're going to laugh about this one. A friend of mine uses this and he's got a very successful company and I found it humorous at first, but then when you think about it, it's actually pretty good. He likes to quote Yoda. And the quote is, "Do or not do, there is no try."
Yeah, it's a good one though.
I'm going to go with Dave.
Thank you, Scott. I think of two different things. The first one is a little out of context, but it's something I read a long time ago and I've always tried to think about it. When going after an action plan and is, and that's a doctrine of the United States Marine Corps, is to act upon the 70% solution. You never wait till you're 100% sure because then the battle is over and you've lost. But one of my favorite quotes is, "To be successful is not final. To fail is not fatal. What counts is to have the courage to continue." Winston Churchill. Karen? How? Oh, wait, see, that's right. Wendy, thank you.
I'll go next. We'll see if anybody wants to offer one. We'll put them, it'd be nice to know. I, the quote that comes to mind is, "Life's challenges are not meant to paralyze you. They're meant to help you discover who you are." And I think back on moments that have felt really surreal and really challenging and really hard and I have learned more about myself going through those and I really like that. So I like sharing that with students that I work with too. We all have challenges, right? Okay, just to kind of see if there's a wave of anybody, of Mike or Debbie, if you feel like you want to offer one, that would be lovely.
One that comes to mind for me is the quote by Maya Angelou, which was, "People will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel."
Thanks, Mike. All right. Thank you. She's passing. It's okay. We have such a great team that they're busy making sure that things are as seamless with us as possible. So thanks. Okay, well.
Semper Fi.
We should just take a little break and just think about all of those quotes, right?
Now, does everyone know what semper fi means? Which is actually semper fidelis.
Semper fidelis.
Yes. Always faithful.
Always faithful.
I love it. Well, thanks for that. You know, I loved listening to, it says a lot also about the quotes that kind of matter to us, right? There, there are small little glimpses into, into each other, but that's only, you know, we're only given these, these little glimpses. And so, and we look at personality and, and there are multiple instruments out there. I don't know if you've done like the Gallup Strength Finders and there's colors and there's the Enneagram and there's the DISC and I could go on and on. There's just some wonderful things. We're, we selected one. And the idea around this is not to put people into a box, you are that personality type. I think that's really unhelpful. What I want to talk through these is using this particular instrument, how can we learn to think about what helps me bring my best self to the table, right? So there's always an element when we do these things where there's some self-learning. Some of those might be things you already knew. You're kind of checking off, I got that. There might be some new stuff. There's the gift though of seeing how you, the, the other people that you work with quite often, right? How can I get some glimpses into what matters to you? How do you like to hold conversations? When it comes to decision-making, right? What shows up in that? Instruments like this might give us some common language and some additional information, but I have to put this caveat out here. There's no one instrument that will ever describe the whole you. I really, really want us to hear that. Even though I really like this one, it's got 75-plus years of research behind it. I think it's pretty sound, but it's not the be all, end all. But how we use it today will matter, right? So the conversations that we have together and the learning that we can have and think about, how does it apply here at the, at the council? I think that's, that's the gift. All right, so I've got then, I'm going to share a screen. And then just talk about the Myers-Briggs. And the way in which I want to do this is the Myers-Briggs is, Scott, I guess it would say.
Wendy, sorry, can you, can you just minimize us? Thanks. I don't know if we need to watch ourselves.
Hmm. Yeah, it's kind of a bummer.
I'm so used to watching us on screens. I'd rather look around the room.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me know about that. Okay, so MBTI has four main, I would guess, I would, I'd like to call them continuums, right? And we've got to look at it that way. Part, part of this instrument is based on the theory that there are parts of our personality that are, that are innate, right? That you're going to have some natural preferences perhaps to one of the, one of the sides of the continuum. Now, over time, I like to call it when we get more seasoned, right, the older that we get, we've had more experiences in life, we've had maybe different jobs that we've really had to activate and use the other side, even though it may not be a preference, you've built a skill, a skill base there. So we are all capable of moving to both sides of that continuum. Some might feel more natural to you and some might take a little bit more effort to, to move toward. So the first, the first continuum, once I get it to work, there we go, is the EI continuum. This is extroversion and introversion. This is our preferred way of interacting, but it's really about where we get our energy, right? And extroverts get their energy from the outer world of, you know, people and things. They're stimulated by that. You can kind of see that first picture up there. It's like, wow, you know, what's happening out here? And that's very energizing. Interacting with that can be very energizing. People that prefer introversion are stimulated by their inner world of thoughts and reflections. You know, going inside first to think about the question that's being, you know, asked and how they, you know, think about something and how they feel about something, we go inside first. It's a very renewing place. Now, the numbers down below, just, I think, I'm a data person, I like data. So when I went through my qualification course many years ago, of the people that had taken the instrument and it had gone to what we call MBTI headquarters, let's just call it that. So this is not meant to say this is the reflection of everybody. Of those several million that had gone through it, 46% of those instruments, the people preferred extroversion and 54% preferred introversion. I thought that was just kind of interesting and some of the other skills might be interesting to you too. It's not meant to say whether we fit in it or not, it just, it's context. So let's see, how does this show up at work? Well, you're going to find extroverts when they are with others, right? They like being in groups. And people that prefer introversion, groups are draining. They can do it, but I can, they can only do it for so long and then they have to kind of go back to their place, whatever that looks like, and do their renewing. Extroverts, you can kind of see them in a group. They're like this. They kind of, they're, they're processing out loud. You ask a question, right? And, and they might start off right here in the answer and they keep going and going and going. And, and people that prefer introversion are like, oh, that's so much noise, you know? And I don't want to watch the whole thought process, right? Because it's kind of draining for the other side because they go inside to do it. Extroverts are doing it outside. So they're thinking out loud and you can see it in action. Extroverts tend to be easy to get to know because they want to be involved and they tend to have a variety of interests so that I can connect with you and you and you, right? That doesn't mean that they can't have depth. It just means, again, I'm trying to give generalities and I hope you're hearing that. Introverts, people that prefer that, tend to be hard to get to know because again, where are they going? They're going inside. And extroverts are like, what are you thinking? Where are you at? They, they don't see any gestures. They see somebody just kind of going inside because they're doing the work, but it's here. Extroverts are doing this stuff out here. They also, because they go inside and have depth, they have a tendency to have kind of some interests that they can get really involved with and develop a lot of depth, right? Because they're really exploring that. So let me pause right here and say, talking for some people, you might, talking is an extroverted activity, but both, we all, you know, both sides have to do it, right? But if you get it, someone who prefers introversion, talking about something that they have depth in, they're going to talk your ear off, right? So don't think that talking is just, means that they're one side or the other. It just means that someone has something to say and there's energy, right? Extroverts, you can kind of go into their workspace and you kind of have an idea, you know, how inviting is it? Do they have several chairs? Kind of like, you know, please come on in, right? They have a tendency, again, to have many work relationships. Now, people that prefer introversion, space matters. And it, it feels territorial because it's kind of, it's their renewing space. It's the space where maybe they do, you know, their work or you have that special space at home or wherever that space is where introverts kind of carve out that that's their renewing space. And if anybody kind of comes and barges in without being asked, it's kind of offensive. And I remember somebody that I used to work with and, and I'd get something on my mind and I'd just kind of go down into his office space and I remember watching him take forever to kind of turn around because, you know, extroverts were already on the second or third sentence by the time, you know, he tuned in. And I realized like, you know, how disruptive that was, how dishonoring that was, without even thinking about it. And so once I got clearer about what my impact was, I send him a message, right? And I say, "I'm hoping to come down in the two o'clock hour," kind of give him a warning of when that might be. But then he had time to reflect and think about what my questions were going to be so that when I got in there, we could have that conversation. It wasn't disruptive to him. I got what I needed and could go. Prefers face-to-face communication, extroverts, if there's something going on, don't do it by email. People that prefer introversion prefers, prefer things in writing because again, they're, they're bringing their best stuff to that experience. They're thinking about it a lot, reflecting on it, and they're, they're writing it out. Or small groups, right? One-on-one is, is best. I think that's one of the reasons why, for a while I was teaching in a grad, grad program and when they moved it online and when I missed out on opportunity to kind of engage, engaging through a screen and having to be really thoughtful about questions, you know, I just can't bring my best self to that experience. Now, others are like, this is awesome, right? They can think of brilliant questions, but I am more in the moment and I know where my energy is and I know how, when I tried that out for a while, it was so energy-draining. I didn't, I wasn't sure I was giving my best self to the students in that experience. So I kind of backed out of it, saying, completely online without really that face-to-face engagement probably wasn't useful for them because I couldn't bring my best self to it. Okay, so I'll pause right there and just give you a chance to kind of weigh in. When, when we think about honoring E and I, and I think about meetings, right? When you get together, I know you have an agenda that goes out in advance and that's a wonderful tool to help people that prefer introversion, right? Because then you can think and reflect and be ready to have those kinds of conversations. Sometimes it's tricky when you're in the middle of something and something new emerges and then you have to get to a place where maybe you're trying to move to a decision, right? And so even though you kind of have some ties around Robert's rules, what do you think that you can do when you're in the middle of one of your meetings? And how do you work to honor people that have preferences around extroversion and introversion? What are some thoughts that you have around that? What do you think? There's no wrong answers. I'm just trying to make it real so that like when you're there in the moment, it can kind of, what do you think?
Discussion? I guess we'll get back to that. Discussion.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, but say more. So just.
Well, a lot of times put this, the documents and stuff up in writing, up on the board so we can work from the document or whatever that is in the writing up on the board so that those that are more introverted can actually work from something in writing so that it's easier for them to, and they're more at home with that, for whatever reason that is, because I have a difficult time with introversion. But I am married to an introvert, so I have gotten used to it.
See, we build skills. That's true. We definitely build skills. But I'm wondering about, and I'm just making this up in the moment, I haven't thought about it yet. But because of the nature of Robert, and I, and I've worked in systems where I've had to use Robert's rules myself, so I understand it enough. And when the discussion happens, it's still a moment that if it, if there's new things emerging and if you have people that prefer introversion, can you pause, say, you know, can you ask each other, can we have three to five minutes to reflect on this? I mean, it might be a time for a little break, but I, I don't know. I'm just trying to invite some thoughts about what might be some strategies that might help you in the moment? People that need that extra time perhaps to really reflect? Or do you feel like it's going along just fine? What do you think?
So I'll say, taking that five minutes sometimes can be really helpful. I know, so I'm an introvert and, you know, oftentimes as a council member, we're pressed to make decisions sometimes on the fly and that can be hard, like if I don't have time to think. I don't like feeling pressured to make a decision without having thought through it first.
For me, the, the delay tactic is to ask questions. So like even just on the thing today, because I didn't know what we were talking about because that's the first time I'd seen that email. So I needed the time. So, I needed the time to, to just figure out, well, what even are we making a decision on? But it gives me time. And then, you know, getting some answers, getting some more feedback, that gives me more time, so that I could feel at least more confident or more co, more comfortable with what the direction I was setting in. Mind you, I still had like nineteen more questions, because that is my nature. And then I try to limit those, otherwise we'll be here all day. Yeah, two great strategies, right? So, asking questions, right? To kind of make sure that, do we have enough information? And then, I'm wondering about, is it personal privilege, you know, point of personal privilege, that, that, that might be the piece that you could activate when you're in the middle of that discussion and give yourself that five minutes to think about. Anyway, I'm just, some things that might be available to you if people need some additional time. But other than that, I mean, you know, your strategies and your processes around getting information out in advance, being able to talk with staff in advance is something that can honor both the extroversion and introversion. Any, any other brilliant insights or questions about the EI scale? All right. The next scale, the SN scale, is one that causes a fair amount of grief in groups. This is your preferred way of taking in information and it's the way you trust information. People that prefer information through the sensing side, right? Gather information through their five senses. They, I, I want to see it, I want to feel it, hear it, taste it, right? I mean, that kind of thing. So, it's very present and past-focused, because you want, I want information, I want data and I want, I want to know what's happened in the past, I want to know how it's happening right now, right? There's a lot of questions. And people that prefer intuition gather their information through their sixth sense or that hunch, it's that intuitive, big-picture piece. So, what that looks like, and I'll get back to the numbers in a moment, but what that looks like is people that prefer sensing, you can see the one, two, three on that screen, there is a comfort in knowing that we can get to the result that we're looking for, because a process has been established and I know we go to step one, to step two and to step three. It's following directions in, you know, something new, like, we all did our COVID tests and we all had the papers out and we were reading all of the, all of the steps. So, it's taking in information in a sequential, step-by-step way and there's confidence in that, because you know it's been tested and we're gonna get there. There's a focus on what is through the senses and there's a trust in what you can verify and that's why being able, you know, to have all of, you know, the senses activated helps. Now, people that prefer intuition also are taking in information, but they're looking at higher-level perspectives around it, abstract meaning, connections between things, and their particular steps aren't gonna be very linear. And so, there's a connection on what is and they trust and rely on insights and patterns that they see, not so much about what people are saying, all the data is. Now, sixty-eight percent of the population, again, who had taken the instrument, so several million at that point, preferred sensing. And only thirty-two percent preferred intuition. And I think it's interesting, because when I think about school systems, for example, right? It, you give someone multiple choice, I remember I always would do very lousy, I hated them, because I could think of all the reasons why they were all right or all wrong and I would agonize, everything but math, right? Math is not, you know, not so much that, but the others. And my husband would say like, the answer's in there, I mean, you can find it. So, it was so clear to him about how to get there, but I think about how systems, some systems are set up to, for really one, one preference. And I think it's tricky for, I think it's tricky to, to test people's learning and things like that, like in the school environment, how do you do that with the intuitive side, which is, it's easier to, to see the sensing side? Anyway, I don't know if this, it was just interesting to me as I looked at this and I think about other systems that are set up that way. Okay, what does it look like? How does that show up at work or in groups? Well, sensing folks are very detail-oriented, they're observant, thank goodness, right? They're gonna, they're gonna be able to read that email and they're gonna see how you missed a word, or there's, you know, punctuation missing or wrong and, that's awesome. They're gonna read the entire message, too. The people on the intuitive side, they skim, right? They're gonna, they, they see, you know, patterns or imaginative, but also writing emails, maybe a long email, when it's sent and then when it comes back, like, oops, you're right, I missed something right there, because they didn't spend perhaps as much time with, with all the detail. Now, again, these are generalities, you could be someone that has learned, like, how to double-check everything, I get that, but that shows up. People that prefer sensing are, tend to want things sequential and they also like giving clear directions. I mean, they're gonna tell you how to get somewhere, like your own little GPS, which is wonderful. And, they want a roadmap for the process, they're gonna want to know what the end result looks like. And they're going to want to get clear about who is involved, what specifically do we need to do, you know, where do we need to end up? You get the idea, right? And go through the who, what, where, and why, how. People on the intuitive side look random to those folks. They prefer to choose steps that are needed and not everything. It's like, it's like you get all of the, you know, process set up, but the person on the intuitive side says, well, I can see how this step works, but then, you know, if we went to this one next and this one, and then maybe they created their own, they're gonna get to perhaps the similar end result, but the way in which they do it might look very different. They like the end result, they just want to know what it is you're looking for and don't tell me how to get there, it drains them. And that, that is, again, one of the things that shows up in teams, because some people really want to give directions and others are like, don't give me the details, you know, I want the forty thousand foot level, right? And they want to know why. And then, people that prefer sensing, want concrete things, prefer ground-level realities and yet, their intuitive partners are like, great, you know, we've had enough questions about the current state, I want to think about possibilities, I want to think about what could be. That's where they want to spend their energy. They want room for their ideas. If there's not room for the ideas, it's pretty draining for people with the intuition strength. The orientation, I think I mentioned earlier, but sensing is past and present and intuition is future-oriented. And think about the gift this is, do you want both? We need to be able to activate both of these strengths in groups and in problem-solving and data collection and all of that. We need someone to say, okay, let's, let's pause, have we had this before? What did it look like? What's, what are the conditions right now and let's document that? And, what could be? What are the possibilities? What do we need to do? What do we need to see differently in the data, right? When, when you create big reports, people that have the sensing strength, hopefully they're the ones putting the, the bulk of the report together. And that's where they go, because that's where they trust the information. They don't want to see somebody else's executive summary over it, they really want to dive in and see it for themselves to draw their own conclusions. And then the people on the intuitive side, they're the easier ones to write those executive summaries and that's where they tend to go and look, knowing that if they have to, the background is there, but they would much rather spend time thinking about what's next. What is this propelling us to do next? Last one, there's a, there's a reliance on experience, there's a cautiousness if something is new, and they need time to gather data and think of similar experiences to be comfortable. There's also a sense of, if it's not broken, because again, they're very good at setting up process. If the process gets you to the result that you need, it's good. People on the intuition side, again, they're relying on something different, they're relying on their own, like, what their experience is and their hunches around that, and they're stimulated by doing some new things and innovation, so there's this try something new. So, just even looking at these, this is the, this is one of the two main scales that really causes grief in groups, because it's how much time we're spending on the data, the data gathering or the, or the possibilities. And if there's not an understanding of what each other needs, right? It can cause, it can cause tension. So, how does this show up? What are some of your needs when it comes to this? And, you know, what have been some strategies that you might have activated around this particular scale? So, let's make it real for you. What do you experience in the SN scale?
Oh, I just know for myself, because I'm one of those people that will see the, how to connect dots. So, I'll see big picture, this connects, this connects and this connects, but no one's with me on that journey. So, I have to do, what I've learned to do is a better job of leaving breadcrumbs and actually being sequential in this leads to this, and then if we get this far, then we can get a little bit more Y and then we get to Z. So that if I, if I spell it out more clearly, then it's, it's easier for people to, to grok or to understand. It, for me, it's just obvious, of course you do this. And I don't understand sometimes why people don't see that, because it's right there, but it's, it isn't.
Yeah.
And the other, the good part about talking about it then for me is that, then I have people that are following with me and they could say, well, Karen, this is where you're wrong. This is where you missed a step and this is where you're gonna get a different conclusion if you keep going down that path. So, it's been helpful to just sort of say what I'm thinking out loud and how I, and how I connect the dots.
And then to kind of piggyback on that is that we have to listen, right? Because we do that, right? Karen and I are very similar in this one, it's like, we see the big picture, I can get you there, but then I have to listen to the data or I have to listen to my fellow council members.
When they're asking questions?
Chris and I over two years, I mean, unless I'm speaking out of turn here for Chrissy, but Chrissy and I are opposites, so then it's like, oh, how do I work? Over the last two years, we've worked together on different issues that's faced the council and, and I just have to listen. I throw the ideas out there and then she's like, where are you going? And, did you even think about this? And I'm like, no. And, and then I listen, well, where are you headed? And then we have that kind of a conversation with each other. I think we need to do more of it, but it's, that's the kind of thing that makes it, so that we are effective then as a council if we, if we have those kind of conversations.
So, which one are you, sensing or intuition?
And this is weird, because I'm very balanced, now that I've been teaching for seventeen years. I do both, because I teach math classes. So, nor, but normally I'm, I'm, I'm on the eyeside, I'm an intuition, I'm a big picture, I'm, I'm about the vision for the city, right? That's where, let's start there. And Deb, I mean, Debbie, I'm talking about my wife, right? Because she's the opposite of me, but you start from the details and then work up to the big picture.
Yes.
And the devil is in the details, by the way, that's a true statement, right? We gotta understand the details. And I'm not afraid of the dig, either, to dig down into the details and figure out, how is this gonna impact the city? What are the unintended consequences of this decision? That's not a problem. I mean, it takes work and time, but, but it also requires me to ask good questions. I don't know which one of us said, Karen, you said that, too, we ask a good question to the staff and then listen. Well, I think all questions are-
My questions are good questions.
I think all questions are good questions, but I also am an educator, too. There's not a dumb question, might be silly, but it's not dumb. Okay, I'll shut up.
No, it's all good.
I was there and then I forgot. I think all of us start with the data and when we get the packets and, you know, we go into, like, the, the information, but, and, and then, I know for myself, I'll go to intuition and think a little bit bigger picture. I think the, some of the challenges and maybe some of the friction is that our future is different. Like, we take the data and then we take it into different directions on what the future may mean.
Yeah, it's very true. Very true. You know, one of the gifts that you can offer is, as you start to work more, you know, with city staff, right? And, and ask things. But if they had a sense about some of your styles, they may know, oh, if I'm working with council member so-and-so, they may want to see just maybe a summary of things, they need to know that I've got data, but maybe if they're really, if you have an intuitive, intuition strength, you know, having bigger picture conversations with some of them, they can be ready for that. You know, and some others might know that, hey, maybe I'm working with another council member and they really would like to see detail and really want to understand the background of this, right? So, if you, if you share some of that with them, saying, you know, what will help me? And you know, and, and that's just not always about preference, that can always be about, if I might dovetail what you offered earlier, Karen, sometimes, or if you did, maybe I'm making it up, when you're new, there's still, I need more information, right? So, there's going to be a need for perhaps more of the backstory and more of the data so that some of those questions are answered. I don't know, but I just think that if people understand, because city leaders can also benefit from knowing what your preferences are, so that they're not thinking, like, why do they want so much detail? Do they, you know, because it can, it can turn into trust. Do they trust us if they're asking so many questions? I've seen this in other elected groups and so, that's why sharing information like this, it's like, it's not about not trusting you, it's about my comfort level and knowing the story, so that I can bring my best self to the table as an elected official, right? So, the more you share a little bit about what some of your preferences are and the city team members can kind of talk through that as well, I think it's useful.
Can I just sort of ask a question around that, I guess? Because I'm just gonna assume that anything I get from the city, I just, from the staff, I believe it. You're giving me the, you're my source of truth. I mean, it's the same way when we were doing climbing last night, you know, you're my ballet system, I trust you to give me the information. So, you, you can assume that even though I do ask a shit ton of questions, it's not because I don't trust the information you're giving me, it's because I'm trying to understand it and get the fullest picture I can on important decisions.
Thanks, Karen. I think sometimes people just need to hear that, it's just a reminder, because sometimes in the absence of information, you know, and when several questions come forward, if they don't, it's just, that's why I just mentioned, that this is the one that I see communication patterns and assumptions go like this, unless people have an understanding, it's like, okay, you need this, so that you feel as confident as possible, this is your preferred way of gathering data, I get it, right? And, we have to have patience with each other, too, that's the part in meetings. If someone is continuing to ask bigger level picture questions, but you have a few more detailed questions, you know, continue to ask for what you need and put that out there and the more context you have with each other, the more useful it is. Awesome. All right, any other brilliance on the SN scale? Great, all right, let's go to the next one. I, I put that in there just to kind of invite, kind of fun. What words come to mind when you see this? Describe this to me.
Van Gogh.
As I say, it's Van Gogh's early work.
That looks like a puddle.
What was that? Textural?
Oh, are we judging?
I see, I see a multitude of faces.
Yeah?
I actually see letter forms.
Ah, yeah.
I was thinking it was a puddle with oil in it and that it's just a shimmering reflection of different things. I, I like it, actually.
Mm-hmm.
I like to use the primary colors.
I like to use the primary colors and then contrasting that with just the black and white. So, good design features.
So, I've heard a beautiful blend of sensing and intuition things in here. You know, people that prefer sensing will, will find things in it, you know, that, what, what do you see? Some of the specifics around that, what's showing up for you? Color, texture, you know, I, I see letters, you know, it might have been, you know, like in some, some spots I see predominantly yellow, other spots I see, you know, so there's, there's comments about it. You also heard intuitive pieces around it, what it could be, it could be a puddle, right? You know, I see faces, I see other kinds of things. It's actually kind of fun, just to kind of listen to it. And actually, several of you offered things on both the S and the N side. And I think that that's really one of the brilliant things about this particular scale. The older we get, the more seasoned we get, our ability to activate, you know, both sides of this particular scale is really healthy, healthy in the work that you do and healthy in the groups that you're a part of. So, cool. All right, the third- The third scale is our decision-making scale. This is the TF, Thinking and Feeling. So people that prefer thinking decide on basic of logic and objective considerations. They wanna analyze it. They're going to create criteria, they're gonna create principles. And that then becomes fair and reasonable. People that prefer thinking, if you can see the upper cartoon, they, they see themselves outside of the problem or outside of what it is. They're trying to decide so that they can look at it objectively, right? Now, that doesn't mean that they're not, they're not a part of the decision or the impact of the decision. It's just the strength of thinking takes them out of that so they can look at the situation objectively. Now, people that prefer feeling do the opposite, right? They're gonna make decisions based on personal and subjective values. They're applying empathy. They are giving special attention to extenuating circumstances or, well, I know that's what's in the rules, but, but here are some individual needs in this moment that we need to be conscious about. They see themselves as part of the decision, right? What is the impact of the decision and how would it affect if I was in that? All right, so, population, pretty close, but still about, a little bit more on the thinking side. So this is how it shows up at work. Thinking people, people with this preference, again, step back and bring that objectivity, which is their real strength. And then those, again, in the feeling side, step in and identify with the people involved. Thinking folks are going to create beautiful policies, procedures, standards and criteria. And they generate, and, and because of doing this, consistency is gonna show up and this is how you can demonstrate to others, this decision is fair and just, right? Here are the parameters around that. But people that prefer feeling want that, but they also really, you know, overwhelmingly, it's the experience of what's happening right now with this person or this situation. They're gonna align that decision with a core set of values. They're gonna aim for harmony in relationships. And these, when you do it that way, that seems fair and just because of what, it's going to have an impact on the people. So how we define what is fair and just is very different. So this is a tension point also in groups. They're both strong and they're both important, but we have to, you know, we have to make space for them both. So thinking, you create structure and analyze pros and cons. Then there's an assessment on the people on the feeling side. There was this cartoon once, I'll just say, you know, sometimes there's, you know, things that I've learned over the years about how to demonstrate, you know, the TF scale. And there was this cartoon of someone who had just, you know, they were, they were analyzing and looking at candidates after they had had the hiring process. And, and on the thinking side, someone said, you know, like, their credentials look good, right? It looks like they're, they're meeting all the boxes. And then in the other picture, it said, "I like them." They're, they're gonna make a difference in the team. So think about that. It is, we want both. You can't have things so wrapped into rules and policies and procedures that we don't consider as much the people impact. Now, people on the thinking side do consider people in their equation. It's just not the overwhelming piece, because they want consistency and they want to be able to make decision-making easier if you've got these rules and policies, procedures and all of that. People on the feeling side are, have difficulty with keeping things so stringent. They want to see some possibilities where you can have some flexibility. Now, you can easily describe the thinking side process. It is more difficult for people who have a predominantly feeling side of making decisions. It's more difficult to describe how they landed in that part of the process. People on the thinking side tend to look impersonal because they're focusing on the tasks. They can remain firm and consistent, well, you know, it hit the criteria or it didn't. And, and, you know, either it worked for the person or we're sorry it didn't, right? They prefer that truth over tact. People on the feeling side focus on those relationships, empathetic, and prefers tact over truth. So I thought this was interesting. It's, it's like taking somebody's full study and putting it into one little line. Somebody did this work. But people that prefer thinking, when, when it comes to the concept of change, they want to understand the logic behind the changes. And they want to know that the people who are leading those changes are competent. Now, people on the feeling side, when it comes to organizing organizational change and moving that, they wanna see the values that are supporting the change. And they want to see that people who are in charge, that they care, they, they care about the people, they care about the impact. And they appreciate and support everyone in that process. So they want to see that, they want to feel that, and they want to hear that. So it's very, kind of, you know, they have different needs when it comes to organizational change. Anyway, that one's, that was someone's full study in, in one line, but. So I'll stop right there and just kind of check in when it comes to TF. You know, how does that show up? What was that, Karen?
Pick a day on that one.
Yeah, yeah. Pick a day, meaning, meaning it, it shows up a lot, right? Just sort of on the opposite side? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Having some flexibility in some things at times, but also having some guardrails, having the criteria, right? What do you think?
Yeah, I think when we took the Myers-Briggs, there's an indicator as to how far over on one side or the other you are. And I find myself to be a pretty, I think it was like, I don't know if it was described as moderate or, so clearly tendencies in both directions. So.
Yeah. I think that, again, it'd be curious whether, you know, again, you, you're activating both of those, Christie, because of being a member, you know, in this realm, that you know that the decisions that you make, you know, the policy that you, that you create will, you know, create both criteria in the city, but it'll also create maybe some options of where extenuating circumstances can be considered. Who knows, right? And it's a, it's a nice strength to be in the middle. Yeah. But it can also cause tension, right? We can see tension that shows up in this. So if it feels too wishy-washy, people that prefer thinking really wanna kind of create some more criteria around it, because then, then you can talk about consistency. And you know, when you think about what our citizens expect, right? They wanna see consistency. And they probably all also wanna see some opportunity to plead their case and get some understanding around that. So it's a, it's a tricky place to be. Any other comments on the TF scale?
This, this might be one that I'm looking around the table in the room and just thinking, this might be a common ground area. It's a guess right now, because I don't know everybody very that well, but I bet we're all probably pretty close to F and T, or T and F. But that, nope, got a couple, okay, we got a couple people who are just straight, pretty heavy on one. Yeah, just, or would you consider yourself, I'm like, I'm pretty close.
I have zero feeling. So, yeah.
So, so then there's where, okay, so tell me what you said again, Wendy, about how this could create some, I got, how it could create difficulties, I believe was the word you used.
Well, it can cause-
Thank you for being honest.
It's just the score, right? Just there's a comfort, this is a comfort in making decisions. Remember, it's not about whether you like people or not. We, we have to move that aside, because we like people. That's aside. This is, but this, this is about the ease of making decisions, right? Is there, what's the criteria? How do we put that into motion so that when we have to activate that decision-making process, that it's as clear as possible, that it can be replicated? So there's a, there's a fair amount of strength. I worked once with this, with this leadership team who, when we kind of did the type of the whole team, there were, I think they had eleven people in the team. They had ten people who scored on the, on the thinking side and one on the F. And you should have seen what the walls were covered with. They had strong Gantt charts. They had, they had process and they had, they had, it was, it was colorful and strong. And then you could just see their decision, their, their strength in decision-making around that. And yet, the one person who had the feeling side felt largely ignored and they were getting feedback from the rest of the system. So the employee feedback to, to them, they were like, "We don't feel like you, you understand, you have all these great ideas about getting things done, but you're not listening to us." And we're like, "That's too much." Right? And so that's both, of course, that's data gathering on the SN scale, but it's really, it's executing. And that's what this one, and they had such strength around executing and seeing how it would all work, but they just didn't make room for the feeling side. So this is again, how can this group be as intentional as possible when it comes to making your decisions? To ask yourself, do we have enough of the criteria? Are we clear about that? Is it in a policy or, or guidance that we need? Excellent. Now, what's the impact on people? What do we need to consider before we execute the final decision here? And what adjustments can we make? Should we make? Right? So making space for both is really the, the gift here. Yeah. Got it, you bet. I was thinking, you know, when you were saying opposites attract. Yes. So many funny stories in my head about close relationships of mine. All right. The last scale, and then we'll take a break right after this, after we talk about the JP scale. But this particular scale is the way in which we organize our environment, how we plan and how we complete tasks. And don't get hung up on the word judging. Remember, this was created seventy-five years ago and, and the word judging now kind of has a different kind of feel today. But just know that the J lifestyle is one that's decisive, planned, orderly. These folks are gonna have lists and post-it notes and, and, you know, day planners and things are color-coded and labeled and they geek out over that. I'm one of them, I know. And, but I'm also on the piece, I'm, this is one that I kind of toggle both sides. Then there's the perceptive lifestyle, which is around being flexible and adaptable and spontaneous. It's too crowded, you know, to, to organize your day to the nth degree, right? Because things will emerge. So you will find that, you know, the Js, in, in looking at these particular cartoon looks, these pictures, they will say, "What is it that has to be met by when?" They get really clear, because then they can organize their time to get to that point. And if, if something changes in the plan, the initial reaction is like, "You know, I, I didn't, you know, I've got this kind of all planned out. I have several things that I'm trying to plan out." And it's very difficult if someone changes the plan. The P side, I, I think it's a little too crazy like that. It might look like this to the Js, where they're like, "I am just not sure where you're at and are you getting anywhere down?" And then all of a sudden, they make it, they make it to that deadline. But part of the, the P strength is, you know, if you imagine, I don't know if any of you like to cook. I'm not very good at it, but, but I know that people that like to cook. It's almost, you taste something, it's like, ah, it needs a little more something, right? And so for some people who are just masters at food and flavor, sometimes things never feel complete, because it, it can always be adjusted, it can always be perhaps a little bit better. It looks like that in the P lifestyle, right? Js wanna bring things to closure. They love checking things off the list. They love completing projects. Feels great. People that prefer P love starting projects. Keeping things in simmer, because there's always more information that you can gather. There's always more deliberation that you can have. There's always more, you know what I'm saying? So it's, it feels like you rush to bring things to closure and you miss out on what could be. And that's very draining for people on the P side, kind of living with people that just like, "Get in, I need your message, I need your piece of work, you've gotta meet this deadline." And it's, it's draining. But it's also draining for Js who really need something for someone that has the perceiving strength. And they don't know how they're gonna land. And they're not sure when it's coming in. So this is how it looks like. Js have a tendency to have that, they, they want order and structure in their daily life and Ps just wanna go with the flow. These folks may never have to have heart medicine or blood pressure medicine. Just, okay, something's different, I got it. Js love schedules. They wanna think about what's needed and then they make plans and deadlines to move things to completion. They really, and if, if you've got a list and you did something else that wasn't on the list, what do you do? You add to the list just for the pure joy of what? Exactly. Cracks me up. People on the perceiving side, that the flexibility, that, you know, being open and remaining open to adjustments is really a beautiful thing. They're gonna follow parameters and timeframes, but they want flexibility in the plan and the options. Js, I think I mentioned earlier, they love starting or bringing projects to closure, scratching them off, wrap it up. It gives them that sense of accomplishment. But people that are in the perceiving side, they wanna keep things open. Staying in a space and staying in a state of possibility is a really cool, thriving place to, to orient yourself in the world. So, so it's actually, again, you know, letting things emerge. They don't want things to be too, too rigid so that they can have a little fun. It's useful. It's kind of like a, Js are kind of like, "Work first, play later." And it's like, "Well, play first, we'll work later." You know, it's all, it all works out somehow. People that prefer J really dislike surprises because of what will happen to the plan that they've carefully kind of orchestrated. And people that prefer perceiving love those surprises, because there's always something new, right? To learn, to discover, and then you can take in that information and whatever you were working on can only be better. And then finally, there's clarity. You want clear and concise goals and priorities so that you know if you're meeting it. There is that sense of accomplishment that, that people that prefer J really like. And they like decisions. Let's have the decision and boom, we can move on. And then those that are in the perceiving side, they see, they see goals as moving targets. "Well, I know we had set this deadline, but these new things kind of emerged, so maybe we can adjust that." And there's, you know, I want overall expectations and wide parameters. They wanna stay curious and, and open. And that's again, the way they orient themselves in the world and, and find strength. So, all right. These are fun ones to kind of see. Sometimes you can walk into someone's space and you can kind of see if they have a J or a P preference. You know, is there stuff strewn everywhere or is it organized in, in their piles? And so, you're giggling. This one kind of makes people kind of laugh. So how do you see this showing up and what are some things that you can do to bring the best out of each other? How does this show up for you? You have schedule. I know that that's part of what we're gonna talk a little bit about tomorrow, right? A little bit on the work plan. So there's things in play, right? Certainly fits the Js' needs for that.
Well, what I was just thinking about is that I, I tend to be up more on the J side and love the agendas. I just love having an agenda to work through. It's so great. It keeps my thought process organized and I appreciate it so much. So I just appreciate that effort that goes into creating the agenda so that we have something to march towards. And on the perceiving side, what I wanna try to do is, how, how do I get ahead of the agenda? How do I actually plan ahead and figure out, how do I add new business? How do I, that fits into a, a, a work plan that isn't crazy? And so, you know, I'm, I'm going way out now, just looking ahead to where would it actually make sense to have it even drop in and to talk about it. But then that gives me time to catch up to myself to a certain extent, to try to get the, to fill in on the blanks in the background on things. So that's kind of how I look at the agenda process, just working for me personally.
Thanks, Karen.
All right, I'm gonna jump in from the, I guess I would say, the staff side of things. This will, this should be really clear about which one I am. I love mowing my lawn because I can actually see progress. And when it's done, it's clearly done.
And it's done in rows.
And it's done in rows and it's very neat and orderly. Which is kind of funny, because when we've moved into the sort of paperless world, I think that you would no longer see the neat- longer see the neat stacks of paper that I used to have on my desk, where, you know, everything had sort of a place to go. I think one of the interesting parts about working with a lot of different people is sort of managing myself within that construct and recognizing that others have a very different approach to things. And so putting, putting that clarity and control about what the, what the outcomes you want to be, giving space for the middle ground, for those that are more perceiving to, to have opportunities to do that, so that we can still get to the end that I'm hoping for, and give people the space in between to actually find their way down to the same point. And I've had to learn to be flexible about what that goal or outcome is going to be over time, if I see that, that everywhere, everybody else is not coming along the same path. So that's just one of those things that, you know, in doing stuff like this, I sort of see things in myself, and I'm like, "Oh yeah, that's totally true." The earlier one, the example I was going to use was, "I hate IKEA furniture, because I just want to set it up myself, and the directions drive me absolutely bonkers." And so I found myself weaving in between these, where I would think that I would have been the other one, where it's like, "Yeah, I want the directions." It turns out I don't. Well, and so then, what happens is, I find myself that I would rather learn how to put it together than be told how to put it together. So my only point in saying all of that is that in, I've learned over time to really sort of read other people and figure out where they are, and, and I've found myself to be adaptable enough to say, "Okay, I can work with that." And I think that's one of the big keys overall in, I haven't been with the city all that long, but in trying to work with like our leadership team and our team in the, with the city manager's office, is to try to meet people where they are and figure out what is the, what is the way that they're successful that I can accommodate, so that we're both successful.
The other thing I was just sort of thinking about, though, is a lot of times you don't get the luxury of being on the perceiving side as much, because once you've made a decision, you have to make a decision to move on. So you don't get to, you don't get the, you don't revisit that. You have to move on, you have to make peace with the fact that you're going to move on. And revisiting is not possible usually, and a lot of times surprises aren't always good. So it's, it's kind of an interesting, if you are a perceiving type of a person, this can squash it. Our process could squash that.
That's a really good point. You know, and it can, it can show up also where people might have a motion to delay, right? So that maybe the Ps might get a little bit more information that they're looking for, right? Let it simmer a little bit longer with whatever that looks like. So sometimes if you might find certain decisions kind of getting pushed off, it might be interesting to kind of check in and say, "What, what processing does, do people need in that moment?" Right? You know, there's other reasons why things get pushed off as well. You know, it can, it could also get back to the SN scale, which is, you know, for people, it's like, "I need more data," right? Or, "I need more time to think about the big picture pieces," and all of that's true. But it shows up in how they orient themselves. So if you find people dragging their feet on it, it might be a need for a little bit more time. Anything else?
I'm just dying to get to the point where we find out where everyone is. And I look down on the sink, and I'm like, "Something in here must be like, speaking to this." Sure enough, right there, reaching closure before moving on to another task or project. Must get closure on that. Thank you.
That's awesome. That is awesome.
That wasn't part of this project.
What do you say? We take a 10-minute break, and then we can come back and talk about some of those other pieces. Yeah, so it's about quarter after, so what, 25-ish after? Does that sound good? Okay, 25 after. All right, well, welcome back, everyone. I wanted to share two small applications of this together, and then we will kind of launch into some of the types that are showing up in the room, and what we can learn more about that. This is just a reminder about how we can activate using several, you know, the sensing intuition scale and the thinking-feeling scale and problem solving. You know, you begin with sensing questions. You know, you want to ask, "Have we had this experience before? What do we know?" You know, you're gathering the data, right? So you really want to activate the sensing side. And in looking at the council's strengths, Kristi and Kaylee kind of lead with that particular strength. That doesn't mean everybody else can't activate it, but it just means that predominantly folks in the council have an intuitive side. So you probably want to launch, the group might find itself wanting to launch more into questions about, you know, not even questions, but kind of launching into ideas or the what-if questions. "What if we did this? Can we do that?" Because you're kind of focusing on the future sense. So part of this, in terms of problem solving as a group, is to focus first on the S, S questions, right? What's happening right now, what's happened in the past? And then move yourself into the exploration, and that's the ideas. And that, there's a lot of strength on the council around that. Then you move over into the thinking questions. Once you've generated a series of ideas, well, then you might want to, you create some criteria to narrow down those ideas. And then you ask yourself at the very end, "What is the impact of this particular choice on people or on the situation?" Right? So it's a nice way of reminding us that we can use everybody's strengths in this. But once again, the council has a lot of strength around thinking, which is good. So your ability to create logic and objective considerations and go about your business in an orderly way is really strong here. Make room for the pause and the impact on people, and ask yourself and invite yourself that there are times when we want to make sure that there's space for that. All right. Any comments or things that you want to offer on this? Okay. I thought this was useful, too. Sometimes, you know, feedback that we can give each other, you can cater to a person's type. So, you know, the EI scale might invite, and you know, Es might want to talk about it, and Is might want to reflect first. But if you're going to give feedback to someone with a strength in the, in the sensing side, they're going to want to see, "When did you actually see maybe this behavior?" Right? So giving someone feedback with an S preference, you know, you can give them a real gift by giving them some real concrete examples of when you observed it, and so that they can think about that, and they might be able to go see it again, perhaps, maybe kind of look at a previous council meeting or something, right? The N side is you want to actually think about the behavior and how that might be relating to the big picture or the outcome that they're looking for, right? So they're going to hear the feedback better when they can see that connection to something like that. Let's see. Thinking-feeling, I know that you guys can read, but it's just kind of fun sometimes just to remind ourselves of some of these. If you're going to give feedback to a thinker, someone with that particular strength, and again, there's a lot of you on the council with that, bring the logic, right? Just bring, bring that, bring the data, you know, offer the pros and cons, what the planned action could be. But the feelers, you know, you're not going to get anywhere if you do that. They're going to want to hear, they want to hear what the impact is. Why am I giving this feedback? And how does it relate to our relationship, perhaps? How does it relate to my impact on others? So the values and feelings need to be a part of that. Explain why it matters, why it matters to you, how it's going to improve the relationship, how it's going to improve maybe the delivery of services to your citizens, things like that. So that it'll, people will hear these better if you at least do your best to try to angle some of your feedback by type. And then finally, Js are going to want to see, determine any present or future actions and secure that person's commitment to the change. You know, they're just kind of like, "What are the next steps? Let's get really clear about next steps." For the P, well, they need time to kind of sort through it, and they might need input from others, right? And just don't think that your feedback meeting is going to end there. It's still going to be, it's still going to simmer for a little bit. So does this kind of land on, for some of you? Does it kind of make sense with some of your type that you've experienced and how you might like to get feedback from others?
It does. I'm just hoping you're going to give us this slide deck, so that we can have it for reference.
It's already in, you do have it.
We do, okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah. You bet. Happy to help with that. Okay. So before I show this, what I would like for us to do is, I handed out, one of the handouts is just, it's called the Myers-Briggs Type Indicator, Characteristics Frequently Associated with Each Type. So you see the 16 types, and if you can find where your particular type is on the type table. Yeah. All I did is just make that change over there. So we're going to have each council member in a moment, this is, this is going to be the invitation. The invitation is going to be for you in a moment to read in your own voice what the, what is written here in the 16 types, the one that kind of landed most for you. And again, I just want to remind folks that this, this will never describe the whole you, and what I would like you to do, once you've read it, I would like for you to comment on it. Do you feel like it's 90% there? If there's a word or two that you think is a little different for you, name it. Does that make sense? So I want you to kind of massage it a little bit, so that it feels most like you. But the coolest thing about this experience is hearing each person with their own words read it, and then we're listening to each other, and we're watching each other speak it. So who is going to go first? And I'm just going to pause sharing for a moment.
I'll step up and go first. ENTJ, quick, ingenious, good at many things, stimulating company alert and outspoken, may argue for fun on either side of the question. I'm resourceful in solving new and challenging problems, but may neglect the routine assignments or just skip them altogether. Apt to turn to one new interest after another, skillful in finding logical reasons for what I want. Pretty close. And actually, I was just explaining to Mike Suggs over here about, he asked me how things were going at school, and talked about many subjects and jumping and being to be quick and almost ingenious on my feet. I was teaching an AP calculus class, a freshman biology class, government, 12th grade government class, and the kid, a brand-new student came Wednesday, I forget what day it is, Wednesday, and he was doing a English Gothic literature, and so we're doing Poe, Edgar Allan Poe. And I, I was teaching all those students all at the same time in the same classroom. It was amazing. I was energized, I was out of control, I was Jim Gaffigan meets Hot Pockets meets Biology meets Calculus and the physics that go behind what might happen due to a Hot Pocket. And the kids were cracking up and laughing, totally engaged. We actually put a calculus problem together to figure out the limits as to how far gas would travel in an open space the size of our classroom, and who would, yeah, it was pretty funny. It was a lot of fun, and the students got a lot out of it. So we did kind of skip some of the actual assignments, but I just took, "Hey, write me a horror story, and you can write about your first day with a crazy, insane teacher." And we had a lot of fun. Yeah. Pretty accurate.
Yeah. That's awesome. I liked the story afterwards, too, because it kind of helps bring this to life a little bit, right? Yeah. That's awesome. Kent, thank you. Sure. Let's go for it. Karen?
Okay. I was ESTJ, so practical, realistic, matter-of-fact, with natural head for business and mechanics. Not interested in abstract theories, that's for sure. Want learning to have direct immediate application. Like to organize and run activities, often make good administrators. Are decisive, quickly move to implement decisions, take care of routine details. I'd say that's right on the nuts. And I had a laugh when you were talking about the chairs for the, when you were talking about the introvert and extrovert. So when I was at school, and we would have our offices in a row, and you could always tell, because I was always stuck in between two introverts, and I would always have, all the offices were supposed to have two chairs in them, the introvert's chairs. They'd always have one, and I'd be having all their extra chairs by office. It's like, "Come, come sit with me," right? I thought you were going to say that they ended up moving theirs, so that...
That's funny. Thanks, Karen. That's awesome. Kristi?
So I am an ISFJ. Quiet, friendly, responsible, and conscientious. Work devotedly to meet their obligations, lend stability to any project or group, thorough, painstakingly accurate. Their interests are usually not technical, can be patient with necessary details, loyal, considerate, perceptive, concerned with how other people feel. I think that pretty much describes me.
Okay. I was ISTJ. Serious, quiet, earn success by concentration and thoroughness, practical, orderly, matter-of-fact, logical, realistic, and dependable. See to it that everything is well-organized, take responsibility, make up their own minds as to what should be accomplished, and work toward it steadily regardless of protests or distractions. Pretty on?
ENTJ. So frank, decisive, leaders in activities. Develop and implement comprehensive systems to solve organizational problems. Good at anything that requires reasoning and intelligent talk, which, that's, it cracks me up, using big words, and such as public speaking. Are usually well-informed and enjoy adding to their fund of knowledge. And I, yeah, sure.
I love it.
I am INTJ. Have original minds and great drive for their own ideas and purposes. Have long-range vision and quickly find meaningful patterns in external events in fields that appeal to them. They have a fine power to organize a job and carry it through. Skeptical, critical, independent, determined, have high standards of competence and performance. The word that actually stood out for me was patterns, because as a designer, we regularly look to the past to see, you know, what is possible for the future, design-wise. And so I've always, like, always had that tendency just to like, find connections between history and what the future could be, and it's just, I don't know, it's a little bit of a game almost, just to find connections where there aren't connections sometimes.
I love it.
All right. I am ESTP, more or less. Good and on-the-spot, problem-solving, like action, enjoy whatever comes along, tend to like mechanical things and sports with friends on the side. Adaptable, tolerant, pragmatic, focused on getting results. Dislike long explanations. That is true. Are best with real things that can be worked, handled, taken apart, and put together. That's, that's fairly accurate, I would say.
Let me stop you there.
That might come out, you never know. I try to swallow that one mostly, but there are times.
I love it. So Dave, go ahead and read yours.
Mine's an INFJ. And I guess reading mine says, "Succeeded by perseverance, originality, the desire to do whatever is needed or wanted, puts their best efforts..." the desire to do whatever is needed or wanted, puts their best efforts into their work, quietly forceful, conscientious, concerned for others, respected for their firm principles, likely to be honored and followed for their clear vision and how best to serve in the common good. I'd say it's pretty close. I mean, I'm relationship-oriented, very much an introvert, find myself in positions that I have to be an extrovert. That's challenging.
Thanks, everyone. So were there any surprises with your peers? No.
I thought Kristy was pretty dead-on.
Yeah. Pretty spot-on with some, yeah. It's interesting, isn't it, how some of these instruments, right, again, you know, never 100% you, but they, they give you enough information. It's like, wow, look at, look at how when those patterns are put together, in the words that kind of emerge, and how you can kind of see, you can see some of that strength. You know, our types, you know, some of this theory works, and there's a handout for you as well that talks about your type under stress. And I think this is also equally important in groups, for people to understand that there will be moments when the kind of work that you're doing, the circumstance that's showing up, is going to, you know, stress you out. And then that's going to show up differently. And people react, they kind of expect certain things from you, and then when you are in that space, sometimes it's kind of like, huh, well, you know, why did Wendy just bite my head off? I don't expect that from Wendy, right? You know, I'm usually not like that. But that's my type under stress, right, is kind of get snarky and kind of bite something back. And so it provides some strategy. First, it provides some guides around, hey, if you're experiencing this, you might be under stress. And while that might seem obvious to people, it's still nice to kind of hear that from others. And then it gives some remedies, some possible things that you could do to kind of help yourself in that. But I think as a group, sometimes it's useful to kind of see that as well. So you're welcome to, to look at that particular handout, find yours, and then look, look at what it offers. While I'm doing that, I'm going to pull up, there's some really fun visuals that is going, will show each one of your types, and it's going to have a highlight of your strengths, but it's also going to show what some of the main stressors are. And I'm going to invite you to kind of name a couple of them, saying those particular words feel most like me, and those are the particular things that most stress me out. And again, I think it's a gift to give each other in that space. So I'll give you a moment to read that. And I will pull this up. Okay, well, two, two little things before I go into that. There's so much about this stuff that just kind of gets me excited, because I think, I'm always thinking about what tools are going to help people work better together. So if you, if you were like me, I was writing down names on the type table when you were going through it. So I've got Kaylee and Kristy in the "Let's Keep It" strength. I've got Amy and Dave in the "Let's Think About It Differently." I have Scott and Karen M. under the "Let's Do It." And then "Let's Change It" is Kent and Karen H. So it's a nice balance of what, of what we have. Yeah, the thing about this, this is, this was a class I went to, this was a two-day class that I'm going to give to you in one slide. Hey, I know, I know, I do this. Well, part of this is, there's just so many brilliant things out there. This particular communication wheel, what this is saying, if you can find your particular type on that wheel, so, you know, find your type, and then if you go to the, to the first word that's on the further, you know, on the outer circle, that is the word, that is the way in which you communicate first. So my particular preference is ENFJ. And the thing that people experience from me first in my language, right, is I'm checking in first on how you're doing. I open all things with check-ins. It's, it's a feeling piece before, before I get into, you know, ideas, and then I want to talk details, and then I want to get to decisions, right? So when I look at my, the second one in, it's, it's just a reminder that you're going to experience that from me first. Well, isn't it likely that sometimes we are either married to opposites or partnered with opposites? My opposite is on the other side. So I approach things from the feeling side first. That's what you're going to get out from me first. But my husband is the thinking side, and we are, the way we communicate, we're work in progress. But it's always opposite. So in groups, you might find that your first way of narrating, you might, if you have, you know, intuition, right, you might want to come at things first from the ideas, I've got, these things were on my mind, I've got some ideas. But the person is like, well, wait a second, I want to spend time talking about some of the details. So you're going to find that in this communication wheel, that, again, you might plot each other on this, as you have time, now that you've got everybody's particular preferences, and you might see, do we speak the same language at first, right? And then do we, you know, or, you know, are there some people that are opposite from me? And then, this is what it's inviting us to do, though. The invitation is, because communication is both sending and receiving, right? Sometimes we get so focused on what I want to send, that part of this is me using tools like this to, how can I adjust my style enough, right, to, you know, maybe change how I am approaching the conversation, maybe choose different language, whatever it may be, so that I am communicating with someone, that I'm, you know, finding a way to bridge our styles so that we can communicate better and not miss each other. So this is just another thing to think a little bit about, and plot each other's names on this, and then think about maybe how you might approach each other on stuff. So let me pause there and see, are there any comments or questions that you may have on the communication wheel? Oh, well, it's on here. I will send it to you.
Thank you.
You're right.
Thank you.
He's thanking me. I will send you the wheel.
We, sorry, you had mentioned earlier that we got the slide deck, but I like searching, and I don't see a slide deck. Is this, did I miss something?
I, it's in a J drive, P drive, some drive, and I will make sure that it gets to you.
Okay, okay. It sounded like others already had it, and I was like, I went back in my email, I'm like, I can't find anything. Okay, thank you.
Hang on, I think Mike has, Mike, can you share with us?
I think it was a miscommunication, so the council doesn't have access to the internal P drive, so we'll make sure that we get that out to the, to the group afterwards.
Perfect, thank you.
Look at all the Ts in there, and they're like, we don't see it.
I'm feeling, very cut out here.
That's good, that's good.
Council is just a sanity test. That's all.
That's so funny. Well, thank you for that, and we'll totally make sure that you get that.
I was going to say, what's the problem here? I don't see a problem right now. Karen, do you see a problem?
All right. So do we have, I think we have someone with the strength, Kaylee, right? ISTJ. So this is the part that I thought was kind of fun. The Myers-Briggs organization created these to celebrate their 75th, and they shared it with people, and I got, ooh, so excited. So, because I thought it was a fun way of showing some of the strengths of this particular person. So Kaylee, can you pick out a couple of words that you think most describe you, maybe out of this, out of this list?
Karen How would like to pick?
Is delegation of duties one of the things?
I think it would be fun to kind of say, how do you experience, you know, what would be a word or two that others see about the strengths that you bring to the group? So, but let's begin with you, Kaylee. What, what do you see?
Prefer working alone.
Thank you. All right, a couple of others. Not everybody has to answer, but, you know, or maybe you can, but, how do you experience, Kaylee? What are some of the strengths that you, that you see? Dependable.
Loyal.
Nice, nice.
Honor.
Oops.
Honor commitments.
Hmm, lovely. Beautiful strengths there. Now, Kaylee, these are some of the things about, these are stressors that, for people in this. So can you name a couple of them that just kind of make you out of your mind?
The picture you showed earlier, that painting, painting?
That was a stressor.
That was a stressor. That was mess and disorder, a lot of noise.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. And again, you guys will have this full deck, so you'll be able to see all of these. Okay, I think the next one is Kristy. ISFJ. Kristy, browse that for a second, and then name a couple that you think kind of really most connect with you.
Detailed, conscientious. Honor commitments.
Nice.
Meticulous.
Service-minded.
Responsible.
Devoted.
Lovely. Look at that. All right, here's some of the stressors for this particular personality type.
One's jumping out right away. Workplace conflict.
Yeah.
Let's see. I, I can like barely read it with the little fuzzies through there.
Yeah, it's stressing.
Indecision.
Thanks, excellent. INFJ. Dave?
Three things that are up there?
Yeah, sure, pick three. That sounds good.
Work with integrity. Empathetic, seek meeting, meaning. Encourage harmony.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah. A couple of others from the group.
Loyal.
How do you experience, Dave? Loyal?
Visionary.
Compassionate.
Committed.
Quiet warmth.
Reserved.
Nice. Excellent. So Dave, here's some of the stressors for this personality type.
Okay. These are things that really bug me, right?
Well, I'm not trying to, you know, again...
Or stress me out.
These could, these could bug you, and I just want you to own which ones are...
Indecisiveness.
Real for you, yeah.
Feeling misunderstood. I guess negativity from others.
All right, thank you. All right, everybody close your eyes for a second. I have to move past four types. All right. ESTP, we are now at Scott. Huh? Dang it, I totally blew that. I'm my mistake. Amy, I'm sorry about that.
So the ones that are jumping out for me would be independent, reserved, calm. I hope I'm visionary.
I love it. How do others experience Amy?
I see as concise.
Independent. Expect competence.
I'd say insightful.
I love it.
Rational.
An original.
An original. Great. All right, these are some things that could possibly stress out your personality type in this. Which ones are real for you?
Disorganized work environment, but, you know, we're all very organized here, so I'm thankful for that. Micromanaging drives me crazy. Indecision.
Thank you.
I'm a procrastinator, though, so, I don't know.
Well, it's good, you know, again, because some of these aren't all 100% for us, right? So I get that. Thank you. Okay, now close your eyes, everybody. Sorry, just give me a second. My mistake about that. ESTP, this is now Scott.
Oddly enough, analytical, observant, versatile, easygoing, just for a few.
Thank you.
Straightforward.
Good humor.
Pragmatic, troubleshooter.
Flexible.
Is this your love life, or do you love life?
Yes.
You don't have to answer that. If you read it right, it says energetic love life. That's awesome.
All right, isolation for sure. Routine to an extent. Inefficiencies.
How about disregarding my practical realities?
I didn't even see that one, yeah.
That's awesome. Thanks for that. Okay, close your eyes for a second. Let me move forward to get to Kent. You're next. ENTP, this is Kent's preference. That's true for you, Kent. We can move the flip chart.
Okay, I'm energetic, I'm definitely independent, and I'm, is flexible on there? Because I'm super flexible, but, no, adaptive then. I adapt to the situation I find myself in.
Thank you.
I see you as curious and questioning.
Assertive. Challenging.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Clever.
I like to think I'm clever.
Enterprising, I'll add enterprising.
Your type under stress, what do you think?
Okay, yeah, the number one, stubbornness. Yeah, that's...
So you struggle with that? That's a stressor when you experience stubbornness from others?
I just, I have to leave. I walk away, because otherwise it's a power struggle, and that's a big no-no in the education world. So when a student's being stubborn, like, hi, you need to open up your laptop, and they don't, that's stubbornness. I want to help them open it.
Got it.
And then I just, that's right, there you just walk away. So it's a blessing.
Yeah.
And a curse, but I just walk away. Yeah, and if you shut down my ideas, I don't, I get, I'm pretty annoyed then. If you have ideas, I think they're really good, I thought them through, so, you know.
Thanks, Kent. All right, the next one should be Karen. Moran. Let's see. No, you could pick whatever, whatever you speak.
I could get a lot out of this one. I could say outspoken, direct, practical. Gee, there's a lot in there. Yeah, those would be my top three right off the top.
All right.
I'd say take charge, be another one.
Straightforward.
Yep, matter-of-fact.
That's fun. So Karen, how do you experience stress? So Karen, how do you experience stress?
Oh, my biggest one would be indecision. I hate it. Constant changes. I hate that. And inefficiency. Those would be my top three.
Thanks. Okay. Last one. Strength of ENTJ, Karen Howe. Karen, what do you see?
Action oriented. Planful. Decisive. And the last one, actually prefer new challenges.
Self-confident.
Tough when necessary.
Natural critic.
I did. Yeah. Tough when necessary.
There you go.
Planner.
I love it. Some of your stressors. What's real for you?
Oh, it's not funny. I never think I'm not lonely ever. So that's just not true for me at all. It's all those people in my head that keep me company.
What are their personalities?
All the others. I would say short-sightedness bugs me. Disregarding my clearly logical decisions would be another. Anyone challenging my competence might be something. So that might be it.
I love it. Nice work. So what? I want to kind of bring this piece to closure. One, you will get the PowerPoint, so you can see those. You can print off the communication wheel and kind of write each other in. What I have, a little bit of show and tell that we can look at maybe during some breaks, or I can just kind of pass it around. I have often used this particular book because down the side, it's got the 16 types. You can kind of open it up and it will give you some clues about everything from management style to dealing with conflict, skills and things that you might be most attracted to, stuff like that. So it's actually kind of a cool, simple, little guide that you can find on Amazon for a few bucks. So it's kind of an older book, but to me, it's gold. Those of you that have little people, right? And I think a few of you do. This is a book I'll just pass around. It's called Nurture by Nature. And I, some of the tabs were some of my early days of trying to figure out how to support my kids. It was kind of fun. What I'm also going to share with you, just to kind of have it going around, type in teams. So once you kind of, you know, you would put all of these together, and the group has a, you know, predominantly balanced with the EI scale, right? But you would look at where some of your strengths lie and how to kind of work through it. So there's some information on the teams. And then I don't have enough copies for everybody, but here's just some show and tell that you can also read a little bit more about. It gives you more information about your type, other than those like 28 words that were in the little box. What we can also do is get you your own book like this. But because I worked at an environmental agency for so long, I just didn't want to assume that you wanted paper. That can also come in a PDF version, so maybe we can talk about that afterwards. So, but I'll send this around. These are just kind of some things I brought for show and tell. And then finally, the last one is, it's called In the Grip, but this is when you're most stressed. So that one handout I gave you that has all of this, you know, I gave you the Cliff Notes version. So all of you already have the Cliff Notes version, which is in that table. And I got that from this particular book. But this one will tell you a little bit more, so that if you happen to be feeling some stress at the moment, you can read a little bit more about it. So that's it that I had planned for the MBTI portion, and I just wanted to see if there was any more comments or anything else that would be useful in helping to make that learning useful.
I'm good.
You're good? Thanks, Kent.
A question. I've taken this before, of course, and what I think, if I were to go back and look, I think I would find that I would still come out the same letters, but closer together, in some cases of the opposite. So more moderated, but I'd have to check it to see. And I'm curious, is there any research that says that that is the case? When people take it over again many years later? For example, do they change?
I have, the short answer, the short answer is, you know, again, the older we get, the more we develop skills to use on both sides of those scales. So, and you might, as you take the instrument, you might think about life's experiences and like, well, I've been both this and this, right? So what we have to let people think about is, it's not that you can activate and do it. What we really want to find out is what is Karen's really, what is your true preference, even though you got the other side? And so in theory, people stay the same, but your ability to toggle to the other side strengthens. So it doesn't, so it makes sense to me that your numbers got closer together. But if you really kind of step back and say, what's really my true innate preferences? You might find that you give yourself that grace to keep the score of what it would have been, but celebrate the fact that you know how to toggle and activate and use those skills on the other side. Yeah. I like it. You find if, sometimes if you take it too early, kind of before, you know, if people really aren't as clear about who they really are, sometimes the more seasoned we get, the clearer we really are about our true skills. Sometimes we take these instruments earlier on and we might be thinking like in a particular circumstance, or a job that I might be in, or a group that I might be a part of, and I might think about, boy, how do I, how am I supposed to show up in that group? And if you take an instrument, that that might influence your thinking. But they do their best in this particular one to try to ferret that out. All right. Well, this has been fun, and I've appreciated your willingness to share. And again, it's not about boxing people in. Just have conversations with each other. Ask for what you need and have a little fun doing it, right? Okay. Let's, we're going to move into learning from differences next. And I'm wondering if we could just take a five-minute transition between the two subjects? Is that fair enough? And we can kind of get the PowerPoints and things ready? Okay, so let's take five. Stand and stretch, and we'll get ready for the next one. Okay. Welcome back for part two. Part two of our afternoon. When we talked, and also when we had our Friday the 18th conversation around what some operating principles, some things that you wanted to see more of with the group. What I heard was, we need to be better at hearing each other, learning from differences, learning how to ask questions in a way of each other that is inviting dialogue and that resists sort of a reaction, right? So you deal with complicated matters, and there's not easy answers, or we probably wouldn't need a counsel, right? I mean, so to create the space where you can deliberate in a way, that you can explore topics that are challenging and uneasy is what's needed, right? And I think about, you know, just the role of the public servant, that there's this this hope that, you know, we can see how people can come together from different perspectives. And you can, you can hear each other, and we can make better public policy because we're creating that space to do that. And it's not always easy. And so I learned, I learned this information, this learning from differences from my mentor. And it has just really served me. And there's a couple of tools within it that I want to share as well. So we're going to watch a portion of a TED Talk here in a moment. And it's On Being Wrong. And I don't know if you have watched this TED Talk. And I'll tell you about more of it once I queue it up. But we have to create the space. True learning comes from difference. Think about that for a moment. You know, we really need to expand my learning by hearing other perspectives, understanding what it's like to experience what someone else's experience. And so learning from difference has to be safe, and it has to be welcomed. And I have to be intentional about being able to do that and engage with that. And so it's a skill set. Excuse me a moment, folks. Share screen. Share sound. I've queued this up to a particular part of this TED Talk. So if you want to on your own, watch the whole thing. It's wonderful. Katherine Schultz. So it's entitled On Being Wrong. And I actually have a little handout for you that just has some of the, some of the points that she's going to make in this. And there's about seven-ish minutes, seven to eight minutes that I just want to show you. So let's do a thumbs up. Hopefully, all of the sound will work just fine. So my sound is only showing up with my computer. I'm wondering if there's the ability to help make it happen with the whole room.
Is all that playing on your computer?
Yeah. And it might be showing up for our guests who are watching. What we do have is, we could read it. But it's, it is helpful to hear her voice, so. Yeah, yeah. We'll get to it in just a sec. Is it a Zoom setting? I tried it and it- Yes. I did share, and it did say- Try round two. Thanks, Mike. Gives us all a second or two. I love TED Talks. You can pull so many things out of them. And here's another thing I've done wrong. And another thing. Say it again. Oh, good grief. My mistake. Thank you. Thanks, team. City team members are awesome.
All CFO astrophysicists ultra marathoners, it turns out. Okay, so, so fine, right? Except that then we freak out at the possibility that we've gotten something wrong. Because according to this, getting something wrong means there's something wrong with us. So we just insist that we're right, because it makes us feel smart and responsible and virtuous and safe. So let me tell you a story. Couple of years ago, a woman comes into Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center for a surgery. Beth Israel's in Boston. It's the teaching hospital for Harvard, one of the best hospitals in the country. So this woman comes in and she's taken into the operating room. She's anesthetized. The surgeon does his thing, stitches her back up, sends her out to the recovery room. Everything seems to have gone fine. And she wakes up, and she looks down at herself, and she says, "Why is the wrong side of my body in bandages?" Well, the wrong side of her body is in bandages because the surgeon has performed a major operation on her left leg instead of her right one. When the Vice President for Healthcare Quality at Beth Israel spoke about this incident, he said something very interesting. He said, "For whatever reason, the surgeon simply felt that he was on the correct side of the patient." The point of this story is that trusting too much in the feeling of being on the correct side of anything can be very dangerous. This internal sense of rightness that we all experience so often is not a reliable guide to what is actually going on in the external world. And when we act like it is, and we stop entertaining the possibility that we could be wrong, well, you know, that's when we wind up doing things like dumping 200 million gallons of oil into the Gulf of Mexico or torpedoing the global economy. So this is a huge practical problem. But it's also a huge social problem. Think for a moment about what it means to feel right. It means that you think that your beliefs just perfectly reflect reality. And when you feel that way, you've got a problem to solve, which is, how are you going to explain all of those people who disagree with you? It turns out, most of us explain those people the same way, by resorting to a series of unfortunate assumptions. The first thing we usually do when someone disagrees with us is we just assume they're ignorant. You know, they don't, they don't have access to the same information that we do, and when we generously share that information with them, they're going to see the light and come on over to our team. When that doesn't work, when it turns out those people have all the same facts that we do and they still disagree with us, then we move on to a second assumption, which is that they're idiots. They have all the right pieces of the puzzle, and they are too moronic to put them together correctly. And when that doesn't work, when it turns out that people who disagree with us have all the same facts we do and are actually pretty smart, then we move on to a third assumption. They know the truth, and they are deliberately distorting it for their own malevolent purposes. So this is a catastrophe. This attachment to our own rightness keeps us from preventing mistakes when we absolutely need to and causes us to treat each other terribly. But you know, to me, what's most baffling and most tragic about this is that it misses the whole point of being human. You know, it's like we want to imagine that our minds are just these perfectly translucent windows, and we just kind of gaze out of them and describe the world as it unfolds. And we want everybody else to gaze out of the same window and see the exact same thing. That is not true, and if it were, life would be incredibly boring. The miracle of your mind isn't that you can see the world as it is. It's that you can see the world as it isn't. We can remember the past. And we can think about the future. And we can imagine what it's like to be some other person in some other place. And we all do this a little differently, which is why we can all look up at the same night sky and see this, and also this, and also this. And yeah, you know, it is also why we get things wrong. 1,200 years before Descartes said his famous thing about, "I think, therefore I am," this guy, St. Augustine, sat down and wrote, "Falleur ergo sum. I err, therefore I am." Augustine understood that our capacity- Augustine understood that our capacity to screw up is not some kind of, you know, embarrassing defect in the human system, something we can eradicate or overcome. It's totally fundamental to who we are. Because unlike God, we don't really know what's going on out there. And unlike all of the other animals, we are obsessed with trying to figure it out. To me, this obsession is the source and root of all of our productivity and creativity. You know, last year, for various reasons, I found myself listening to a lot of episodes of the public radio show, This American Life. I'm sure a lot of you know it. And so, I'm listening and I'm listening. And at some point, I start feeling like all the stories are about being wrong. And my first thought was, I've lost it. You know, I've become the crazy wrongness lady. I just imagine it everywhere, which has happened. But, but a couple of months later, I actually had a chance to interview Ira Glass, who's the host of the show. And I mentioned this to him and he was like, "No, you know, actually, that's true." In fact, he says, "As a staff, we joke that every single episode of our show has the same crypto theme." And the crypto theme is, "I thought this one thing was going to happen and something else happened instead." And the thing is, says Ira Glass, "We need this. We need these moments of surprise and reversal and wrongness to make these stories work." And for the rest of us, as audience members, as listeners, as readers, we eat this stuff up. You know, we love things like plot twists and red herrings and surprise endings. When it comes to our stories, we love being wrong.
I like ending it right there, like, "I love being wrong." Okay. Reactions, comments about the seven-ish minutes that you watched. What struck you?
It's okay to be wrong.
Yeah.
Being wrong is how we learn, in essence.
I think, don't be afraid of exploring the wrong. I mean, because the why is really important to me. I understand why. And when something doesn't work, I also need to understand why and digging into the roots of it. So, it's as worthy of exploration as the success.
I did like the assumptions.
Yeah.
Like, you automatically think, "We all have the same information. Why aren't they seeing this? They're idiots."
Yeah. It's unfortunate, isn't it? And I think she used that term, "A series of unfortunate assumptions." And I've been guilty. I think most of us have been guilty of kind of going down those, that path. And you think, "Ah, how is that serving us?" Right?
Yeah.
Other things? Okay. There's a couple of things that I wanted to pull out. And let me start sharing the screen again. Thank you. Okay. I pulled out a couple quotes that I've not forgotten from her TED Talk. "Trusting too much in the feeling of being on the correct side of anything can be very dangerous." When we stop entertaining the possibility that we could be wrong, we wind up doing, well, I just dumb things, right? I mean, she talked about big things. But we can tank all kinds of things when we stop entertaining. Just, to me, just hearing those words, "When I stop entertaining the possibility that I could be wrong," it's like, "Ah," because we really could be. And people look at facts differently, which again, is the gift of discourse, right?
Well, I was going to ask a question because I'm not always sure that it's always right and wrong, right? Oh, God, words. So, for me, it's, could be different. You could be making a decision between two great options.
Yes.
It's not always heaven and hell. There's space in between and there's things that just work out differently and can work out really, really well. So, the fact that there's a change isn't always evil and the fact that there isn't always a right way to do things. I get concerned, frankly, if somebody says, "Well, this is the right way to do it." Is it? I immediately have a question about that. Because there seems to be always a process improvement somewhere. So, that's just my view of that. It's, the world is not so black and white.
Yeah. And also, you know, kind of combining what you were just offering, Karen, with some of what we heard earlier about your personality strengths, right? It really is this exploration that you can really bring to the conversation. It's like, well, let's not just pigeonhole it into those two. We could have, there could be other possibilities, right? And that's a real, that's a real strength. But this is a practice, right? And sometimes groups, we create culture. And sometimes the way in which we go about things. And sometimes, you know, again, I just want to acknowledge, Robert's Rules is not the easiest to really engage in some of the depths that you might need with each other. So, it's like, let's just recognize that. Okay, it's not as easy. But a couple of strategies, giving each other a little bit of time if we need to generate some ideas. But I remember I learned once that there's a continuum of, you know, like, there's discussion, debate, and dialogue. And discussion, you know, a fair amount of the time, that's what we have in Robert's Rules. It's like answering one person back or answering the leader, right? That, you know, the question back. We might be informing each other of just information, but it's discussion. Debate is, you know, again, we're, debate is a different kind of art of conversation. And I find, for example, that my partner wants to debate a lot. He likes grabbing facts. And I'm not a fact, I don't remember facts. I'm more principles and values. So, I can't have conversations with him because I want to get to dialogue. And he loves debate. And I end up talking about leaving the room, Kent. Sometimes I just have to say, "I can't have some of the depth of the conversation that I want because we're not meeting each other in that place." It's like, what do we need in this moment? I want dialogue because dialogue doesn't mean that I'm going to change your mind or you're going to change mine. I'm just allowing myself to be in a space, to be open, to hear what you have to say. I'm not going to interrupt you and I'm letting new things in, right? And as I let new things in, it informs my thinking and I might be able to make some changes. But I'm hungry for more dialogue. And it takes longer and it takes more patience because sometimes we don't have enough time and things like that. And sometimes people aren't looking at it that way. Sometimes people want to kind of argue facts. And it's like, that's not my strength, you know, in certain subjects. But there'll be other times when you need, when you need the discussion. But I just think that we need to be clearer about, what are we looking for here? But I think the skill that we are missing is conversational competency. And I heard that once from another TED Talk. So, that's not a Wendy made up name. And I'll get you the link to that one because it's really cool. It's a very good one. But there's, you know, how do we have conversations with each other and not take certain things and want to say, "Well, that wasn't right" and kind of argue that piece, right? And I find that that's in my most important conversations I have with my partner because that's where he thrives, you know? So, you get the idea? You know, I'm still invested in the relationship. We're not sending a, but it causes stress. And I think it causes stress for him because he sees me shut down. And I, and I think he's hungry for that kind of a debate. But anyway, you kind of, so, any thoughts about that piece before I move? That's right, you don't have to comment on my relationship. That's all right, too. But I bet you have people, right?
But I'm one of those that can remember the percentages and the.
Are you?
I'm one of those that debates that way.
Yeah. You know, but I think that, I wonder if that's also like that TF thing, too. You know, just to kind of, you know, blend these two conversations. It's very much a T strength to remember. Language is a skill for the thinkers. And being able to remember and retain that is a very strong S. So, I'm not surprised that that, that shows up. Yeah. All right. So, again, these are just things that exist. So, we already watched that. So, I'd like for you just to think about a time, though, just to kind of reflect on this yourself. And we're just doing kind of like our own little introverted exercise here for just a moment. I would like for you to think about a time when you knew you were right and the other person was wrong. Again, what makes you certain that you were right? And here's the part that I want you to kind of reflect on for a minute or two. How would things change if it made no difference who was right or wrong? So, let's play for a moment with some, with some things. So, the skill, I almost call it a discipline, right? For those of you, actually, Amy, you earned your black belt. I mean, it takes time to learn those routines, right? To practice that discipline. And I think of this as the same. This isn't just one skill and we're done. Learning from differences is a discipline. It's a leadership discipline. So, when we, when we are in judgment mode, we stop being curious and tend to not gather sound and current data. So, I'd like to just describe what that, what that means. There's like a whole day class that I, that I talk about, sound and current data. There's, see what I'm doing for you? You get the Cliff Notes version here. But the, so, sound data. Remember the Myers-Briggs and the data that you trust, right? So, if you're someone that needs a fair amount of, I need to see data over time. I need to see that this has been a reoccurring issue. That might tell you that that's sound. But if you've got one data point, right? You had one phone call from someone, right? Is that enough data? Well, maybe, maybe not. It all depends on the nature of that call, with the content of that call. You know, when I hear things like, "All the American citizens or all the American people," I smile at that and cringe sometimes because of that. Well, I haven't been asked. Have you been asked, right? So, so, when we use absolute language like "all," "never," "always," it's like, that to me, isn't sound data because it's not possible, right? So, what is sound data to you? And I think that's a healthy conversation, especially with the work that you do. What is enough? It's like, what's the 70%? Or what's enough of the history? Do you have enough questions? Great, so, what's sound data? Now, current data is also just as important. Sometimes we operate on old data. And that's not just on the policy stuff that you're talking about. We operate on old data with people and relationships. Well, Wendy did this once. And then, now that's forever, that storyline in your head, you know, about Wendy. And so, we need to be better at inviting ourselves going, you know, "Am I judging that past moment and making it a part of every conversation I have with Wendy then moving forward?" And, you know, holding me hostage to something in the past isn't always useful, right? Have I toned for it? Have I talked about it? Have I learned from it? I mean, there's a number of things, right? That's not mean to not consider it. But this whole piece on, you know, keeping judgment mode out, inviting myself to be curious and then reminding myself, "Am I operating with sound and current data? And if not, how do I do that?" Because again, this is where assumptions come in. And sound and current data could be in that I just pick up the phone and I talk to somebody and say, "Hey, instead of running with, you know, what I think you said or what I thought happened at that meeting or any of these number of things, let's just get clear about it. Let's just chat about it." All right? Our beliefs may block us also from learning from differences, right? There's a lot of things at play with that. There's a great article, and I'd be happy to send this to you. It's an older one from the Harvard Business Review. And it's called "Teaching Smart People How to Learn." I don't know if any of you have kind of read it. But a fair amount of it is talking about the belief systems. Because sometimes, you know, we learn something. Now, just imagine, and I've seen this play out, that, let's say, you got your degree at a particular university. And you know, we're influenced by those professors at that university. And maybe one of those classes that first introduced you to a particular kind of model or framework that's so important in your field, right? But that professor really didn't like a couple of the other, you know, authors of models. But you know, there's usually more than one model for things. So, now you are going on in your professional life and somebody else is saying, "Hey, I really like this one model and let's use it." And then, you know, right away, because I, you know, don't even think about it, that I was first influenced by, how did I first learn it? And sometimes, you know, not intentional, people aren't trying to kind of set us up for failure. It's just a very natural thing to do. How did you hear about it first? How did we learn about it? How, you know, our beliefs are being formed by how I grew up, how, you know, the values being shaped. What were the okay things to do and not okay things to do, right? So, all of these things, among others, are contributing to our beliefs. And that sometimes gets in our way of being, of pausing and learning from differences. I mean, I was even subject to that. Again, I think a fair amount of the time, it's when it touches something that you feel you have expertise in, we're a little less tolerant of really listening and really coming at it from a place of curiosity. So, we want to be thoughtful about that.
I had a comment, Wendy.
Yeah.
I got a little stuck when you were saying that. You were talking a little bit about how, you know, past behaviors and about yourself. So, what about where you don't have the data and you are only informed about, you can only base your decision on history? You know, how they say, "History informs the future" and that's all the data you have? And so, you do have to look and make, I think, some decisions just based on the past. And so, I don't know if you have a take on that.
No, it's useful. So, what I hope you hear is that I'm not trying to discount the past, that I believe that it has a place in informing, informing the present. Where we go sideways is if we don't, so, let's say, you know, some of the mistakes I've made in the past. And if people can, you know, and if, and in those mistakes, let's say, part of my process has been, I've learned from it. I would hope so, right? And that I'm doing something different. If people continuously look for the moment when, like, I'm going to let them down, then you're not really truly releasing me from that past experience. You're not inviting and letting new data come into play, right? The present tense. So, that's part of what I want to offer is that we need to be in a space of learning from and then inviting ourselves to be of choice right now about how do we, how do we then engage with Wendy today on this project? You know, even though she missed some deadlines before, how do we make sure that that's not going to happen now? And there's some, some specific things that we can do in that. What I'm also wondering if I'm hearing is like, you have a past experience, but there's, you're saying that there's no other data that you can get in the present tense? Well, and then I would ask, it's like, well, what's, what's the need in this moment? You know, we use, we use those frameworks to inform our decision-making. But if you, if you keep that one slide, it's like, keep yourself open to the possibility that, you know, as you move forward, right? Hopefully, if that person or that situation comes into play moving forward, that you're open to the, you know, if the past was only part of the story, but now it's, it's looking different. So, keep yourself open to new sound and current data.
And there's oftentimes where there's no precedent either. I mean, I'm just thinking about like world events right now. So, you, there is no history. And so, you know, people are making decisions based on just what's happening.
Oh, absolutely. And that's again, where the gift is having a diverse set of minds and people at the table to have conversations, saying, "Well, what's the best we can do at this moment with the limited information that we have?" Good question. And some of these don't have all the, all the answers that we want. There's not so much of a blueprint moving forward. But again, I think about some of your strengths, Amy, that you can bring to this. It's like that large, big picture and that vision. And so, sometimes crafting that, you have limited information, but enough to kind of help with, with moving forward. So, bringing your skill set into those conversations can probably be pretty useful.
Wendy?
Yeah, Dave.
I wanted to.
I wanted to ask you or share some experiences that I think are applicable, maybe here and other things. One was that I think people need to keep in mind is perception is reality. And it was many, many years ago when I was faced with this. And I thought I coined the term. And then as I expanded my horizons, other people were using the same sort of thing. But I found in a testing process early in my fire service career that people perceived me much differently about a certain area of multitasking. Yet the job I did was nothing but multitasking. And they had this perception that I needed to be able to multitask, that I was too focused. And so I developed that term for myself. Their perception is my reality, but they misperceived me significantly. So what am I going to do about it? And what I found that I had to do about it was change their perception of me. So I had to go out of my way in a subtle but direct way and demonstrate to them that they were incorrect. And not telling them that they were incorrect, but by demonstrating that I didn't have the shortcomings that they thought I had. So it just meant I needed to come out of my little area and get out of my introverted nature and demonstrate what that was. So that's more, that's another way of saying, I got to meet somebody more than halfway.
There's a couple of things what I'm hearing there. I think, one, it's important for us to have this self-assessment, to think about, what is my impact on others, right? And kind of check in, going, is that what my intention is? You know, here's my intention and what is my impact? It's like, oh, it's not the same. It's not congruent. And then you have choices, like you were saying. So part of that could be, well, sitting down and maybe having a conversation. And in a way, in that conversation, you're providing more opportunities for questions and more sound and current data, right? So that not operating on unlimited data of you and experience, that maybe there's a broader piece. The other thing is, you know, feedback. You know, the system is always giving us feedback. And groups, you know, you can walk in and you can check it out. And I think that getting into a habit of checking in on being, what's my intention? What's the intention I want to have on that relationship? What's the intention I want to have on this project or this group? Most of the time, it's not project in terms of the stuff you have to do, but it's all about relationships. And how's it going, right? I wanted, I came into this project and I wanted to be a helpful expert from my line of business, my department. And is that how they're experiencing it? And so, you know, the clearer I am about what my intention is and what my goal is in terms of having an impact, then the freer people are about giving feedback about that goal, about that. And say, well, Wendy, here's how I'm experiencing you then at those meetings. You wanted to be a helpful expert, but we find that you're holding back some more and I don't know why. So you might have more expertise, but I'm not hearing it. Excellent feedback for me. I can do something with that. So it's again, it's the art of feedback. And feedback is always better if the person has a goal and then understands how they are in that space of how others experience it. So, thanks, Dave, yeah. So, learning from differences is an important piece, right? So we recognize some of the things that get in the way is judgment. Am I really being curious? Or am I being curious to kind of fill in my own blanks? Am I truly being curious to kind of let more things in there? So, learning from differences is not tolerating differences or agreeing to disagree. I hear that sometimes in group norms, you know, you're working with a group and they say, hey, it's okay to agree to disagree. It's like, well, that's always true. And... But that sometimes gives people permission to just stop learning. Means like, well, we just disagree. And I've seen that in teams. And to me, it's like, well, you might get to that point, but sometimes it's still important to explore what's really going on. Do people feel heard? Is it a point that's not being made yet? You know, any number of things. But try if that's something that shows up. It's like, well, how are we truly coming at this from a place of curiosity? When we explore difference, we're actually learning something about ourselves from that other person. So, I love that. By the way, this good friend, Munup, and he would go and walks. One's my dog and one is a neighbor's dog. And, you know, he's teaching us Thai. And, you know, having these wonderful conversations about his spiritual and religious beliefs along the way on these trails. And just learning from that difference didn't mean I felt any different about my belief system. It enhanced my belief system by asking him questions. And it was such a beautiful thing. And my dogs, our dogs loved it too. So... I also learned a lot from Dr. Daria Funches. And she shared this quote one night. I was listening to her speak. And when wounds, ego, and fear get involved, they interfere with accurate perception. And I can think of times, so I really kind of let that marinate. And I could think of times, like, I had this vision of my neighbors. You know, the weekend I moved into our neighborhood, they were having a block toga party. I thought, this is my kind of place. It'd be fun for an extrovert. I'm like, this is great. They were having everybody there. And, you know, and when we would get together, the data I started to pick out and think about is that, you know, as much as I wanted to have conversations with people, they were much more interested in having conversations with my husband. He had a much more interesting job, more things. And it started to just tick me off, right? And then I have to, oh, it did. And I would say it was probably both a wound and an ego piece for me. Because I'm like, hey, I'm not just, I'm not just this. I have things I'm doing in the world that I'm excited about and why aren't you talking to me? I think I got so hung up on expecting to see that, that I didn't really kind of enjoy some of the conversation and didn't recognize that, I think I was creating my own reality around that because I had some stuff going on. So I've seen this and experienced this at my individual level. I've seen this in groups and in larger organizations. Yeah. I was just looking at some of the, just different examples. But I want to give you a chance, you know, if there's... Does this make sense? We can kind of see how this plays out? Yeah, okay. So this is another one. Okay, we recognize some of the challenges that we have going on. So, things that are happening in our brains. When we are in conversation, or sometimes we're having an experience, and all of a sudden, something gets triggered in me, right? And my, I have this fight or flight moment. It's that amygdala hijack. And, you know, when that happens, when my emotion level goes up, my cognitive level goes down, right? So when I'm having that emotional spike, you are not going to get the best thinking out of me until that evens out again. So it's going to prevent thinking. And really, all you're going to get from me in that moment is a reaction. And then, you know, if you couple that with everything else, what's been my pattern? Maybe my reaction is to shut down. Maybe it's to leave the room. Maybe it's to bite back, right? Because I said, when my type is under stress, sometimes I get snarky. Not often, I just kind of clam up, you know? But the reaction usually isn't very helpful, of course, for the group. So what are my choices, right? So what we need to do is let some time pass. And again, ask for that recess. Ask for some time. Say, can we have a conversation later? Because, you know, first of all, when that emotional spike is going on, it might take hours or days for that to kind of come back into equilibrium. And when we let that time pass, I can reflect on that experience and I can go inside. Here's the thing that I do. I interview the feeling. And I want to write the biography of those feelings. Why am I feeling this way? And when did that first start? And what's contributing to it, right? So just your reflection, whatever your story is, it's going to be really helpful to you because you want to kind of give yourself more strategies to work through things that are, you know, to work through the reaction. Being curious and then the power of the reframe. And that's a tool that we'll go over here in a moment. Because then I have more choices. And that's a gift. And then I don't leave carnage in my relationships or the projects that I'm working on. So I'll pause here. Makes sense? Experience this? Yeah. You know, sometimes we see this in others. We see that maybe they're having that moment. You know, we can be good partners in that and just say, maybe a little break? What do you think, right? You want to come back to this? When did we stop being curious, right? I think that there are times, you know, we celebrate it with kids. We celebrate students learning new things. And we don't have to just be in our infant stage. But when we learn new things, we give people permission to make mistakes and fall down. And, you know, it's a good thing that we don't learn to walk as adults, right? That we learned, because we'd fall down once or twice and we'd be like, I'm done with that, right? Because I don't like it. So we need to kind of bring on that persona that it's okay to explore. It's okay to ask questions. It's okay to challenge thinking in a healthy way so that we can learn and grow. All right? So here's the pattern that I want to invite us to think about. So the three steps, it's like there's three phases to having a learning from differences conversation. Think about someone who did something different or shared a different opinion or perspective that triggered a negative thought or emotion in you. And then we want to think about what triggered that negative perception? And how is it different than what you think or believe? And then I think that those are those two pieces. And that's why I talk about kind of interviewing the feeling and letting some time pass. Because, you know, sometimes people aren't interested in learning from others. And I think, again, this is why it's a discipline. I have to step forward and say, what is it that I need to learn here? And then ask yourself, what is it that I want to learn from that person about their thoughts and beliefs? And this is where the problem shows up. Most of the time, if people have done a little bit of work thinking about, something is triggered, I might have to have a learning from differences conversation with someone. And we kind of move that into me orchestrating my message to them. That it's almost like, you know, how I want to kind of convey my thinking to you. It's almost like preparing for the debate, right? I'm going to try to line up my thinking. I'm going to line up my facts. And if you say, if you're going to say this, then I'm going to prepare for that. And so we've got to, that's the element that has to be gone here. We need to think about, what is it that I want to learn about their thoughts and beliefs? And I've seen this done amazing. There was a group that I was working with. And there was a job class that hadn't had a raise in several years. And there were some people from that job class in this training group, in this day. And there was someone who wasn't affected by that, who made a comment in the group about calling, kind of categorizing them as whiners. And you can imagine, right? And it was a trigger. And it hurt because they haven't, they didn't feel heard and all of that. And in that moment, I asked permission. Can we sort through this right here? You know, are you willing to listen and to ask a few questions? And are you willing to kind of engage? And it was a really powerful conversation because they invited that person to have that conversation. And then we, well, and he already kind of described it, but I'm trying to give you the pieces here. You know, you want to invite somebody to a conversation without disclosing all the whys. Well, I want to know why you did this, really. Or why do you think that? You know, because this is what I think. And that's usually what people do. They are armed and ready with their thinking. But that's what I'm telling you to kind of leave aside. You want to go in there and be curious and listen. And so you want to ask that person about their thoughts and beliefs and seek to understand, ask those open-ended questions, and let something new into the thinking. So is these two people in this training class right there in the moment, right? And I kind of helped coach some of the language. But they explored, what has been the impact of this? What do you want others to know about your messaging here? And, you know, when you hear the words, "You're being a whiner", what's the impact on you? So, you know, they were able to convey some of the things that they wanted, but this person learned a lot more about what was holding up in the process, why the process was important, what the impact was. So it was greater than what he saw as just a group of people not getting a pay raise. It was much deeper than that and much different than that. And it was pretty transformative in this group. And I was grateful that those two people allowed that conversation to kind of take place. And the hard part was, is I kept having to keep that one person from stopping to explain why they thought, why he thought certain things, right? Because if you're coming at a learning from differences conversation, I'm coming at it with a set of questions to learn from you about your thoughts and beliefs. I'm not there so much... And if they ask me a question back, then I can offer that. So does that make sense? You want to come at it exploring that. And then when you're done with that conversation, what did you learn about yourself? What are you so curious about? And then you want to check in on that relationship. It's another piece that sometimes we don't do. Are we good? Is there anything undone right now that, you know, what do you need to hear from me so that you feel like, you know, I came at this from a space of learning? So you've got this pattern in your handout, the one, "Learning from Differences". But it's really kind of a cool thing to witness and be a part of. Karen?
So what I'm curious about is emotional intelligence and the ability to compartmentalize. So by that, I mean, taking a situation where it could become volatile, but instead removing yourself from it emotionally and just putting the decision or the argument into that box in front of you, but not on you. You're not wearing it. And being able to talk about it, not the person, and not reflecting on the person, but about the decision or the thing that you're trying to come to resolution on. So, you know, I have an expectation that people can do that, but that is not always the case. But is there a way to cobble that together to a certain extent? Is there a way to make that an easier transition for people that have difficulty transitioning between, I am not the argument. I am not the thing being fought over. This is what we're fighting over is over here.
Yeah.
Does that make any sense?
Of course it does. And let me just throw it out to the group first. I mean, what have been some of the strategies that you have enacted to try to help separate the person from the issue? Anything that you've tried and felt like you've had some success in? We can learn from failures. So what would you do different, right?
I can give you an example of failure, not a success, right? So instead of doing the individual, just do the whole council. My comments to the whole council. Because, okay, so let me explain my thinking. Well, I'm not supposed to do that, right? Because I'm supposed to be listening and be curious. So I'm going to say you were curious then, Karen, and that you'd like to know. So we are a six-member council and the decisions that we make, then we have to live with them, including me or anyone who is in dissent or disagrees with the outcome of a particular vote. Welcome to sitting on a council, right? And it's a democracy. So instead of attacking an individual, why would I do that? No, attack the whole council then, which includes myself. So... And in this case, the issue is about our growth target and it's about the definition. What I'm coming to understand now through some conversations with my fellow council members is that it's about this term, "Managed Growth", and what does that mean? And who is it? Who is managing the growth? Why are we trying to manage the growth? Should we even be managing the growth? So there's all these questions that we need to have an open conversation about, about actually to be at a place where we could move forward with what's going on with the city. It might be wise of at least one council member to get a firm definition of what a particular word means to each one of us. Because the word "managed growth" or "balanced", one of our council members uses the term "balanced growth", which actually has more complexity to it and maybe even has, maybe it's a better way to refer to it. But we'd still need to define that, right? So that we're not sitting here, because we get public comment. I don't know how far I want to go into this with you guys, but we get public comment all the time about, you know... two different types of positions, you know, that we have the pro-growth and the stop-growth or the no-growth. It's like, okay, there's nobody that's sitting on this council, by the way, that's choosing no-growth. Because, well, I don't know about the pro-growth yet because I haven't, because I'm not really offended by if, well, I'll just be straight. Amy, if you're a pro-growth, that's fine. Actually, based on how you campaigned, you were a pro-growth person or said, let's move forward with the town center. And so that, to me, is like, okay.
Hold on a second.
Like, my comment wasn't even directed towards her because I already knew, I perceived her position already as being pro-growth.
I think we need a definition of pro-growth if we're going to have a definition of managed growth.
Yeah, okay, there you go. I agree.
So what, what I'm noticing, now, again, I'm going to stay out of the content because I, you know, not mount my place. And I don't understand, right? The piece. What I'm curious about is, you know, what in what you were just offering, Kent? You know, again, can you see opportunities? Because you said, to kind of premise what you were saying is there might have been some areas that you didn't do very well or didn't ask questions. And so finding one area on how do people define things? It's like, so that's a learning from difference. You might say, how can I have a conversation? Or maybe even do it in the council and say, how do people define things? You know, if, if that's one of the pieces. Rather than, because I think what I'm reacting to is that I heard, this is what I heard you say on the campaign trail and you didn't, there wasn't a question for Amy in that. And so that's the piece that I want to invite us to kind of pause and say, we might have heard things. Again, it's our perception or reality. You know, all of that's true. But what is it right now? What are you, what are we curious about? How are we creating this space so that we can hear the different perspectives? And if you find that we have different ways of defining certain words? Okay, well, at least it's out here and we understand that. And then how do we get to a definition? Okay, now we've got that done. What else do we need to learn from each other so that it's, it's the dialogue that you're looking for? It's the conversation that's going to strengthen your, your policy work. Right? So does that, I mean, I guess, I'm just pausing right there because, you know, that was the part that, that if you want to demonstrate anything in the room, are there questions for each other for things? Right? And we don't want to go into any content pieces today. And I know this isn't the place specifically for that. But in terms of learning from a process, what's going on for you? Or what, I see both of you with some nonverbals. What are you thinking?
I don't like, or, or let me reframe this. I don't appreciate people labeling people. You know, if we're going to talk about definitions are, that's a, that's a definition about policy, you know, as opposed to labeling somebody.
So it's a point where it's like you are a pro-growth or pro-something or other, right? It was that piece?
Yeah. I mean, we shouldn't be doing that.
Yeah. What's the, can I ask, just to kind of play this out for just a moment? Hold on. What's the impact on you when that happens?
Well, of course, you know, he is probably defining that label one way and I'm defining it a different way. And in fact, it could be somewhere in the middle. But he hasn't, I have no idea what he's thinking, you know? And he doesn't know what I'm thinking either. So he's labeling me without actually defining what that means.
And the impact on you when you feel labeled is what?
Well, of course, I feel angry.
Yeah. And unheard. Okay. So that's the part that, you know, we're just trying to, to avoid. Right? So, so Kent, I cut you off. How's this landing for you in terms of thinking about the process? Go ahead, Kristy. What are you thinking? Oh.
So what's the process? I'm sorry. Ask the question again, please.
Because again, the whole idea, what we're trying to strengthen today is learning from differences. Right?
Yeah, that I'm curious. I'm curious about what their position is on growth.
There you go.
Are you a pro-growther or are you a managed growth person? Or are you a no-growth person?
So it sounds like, so you want to have a conversation around that?
And let's define them.
And you would like to kind of put it into some of these categories?
Sure.
Because that's important to you, how?
Because it's going to determine where the direction of the city is going to be for the next 10 years or till 20, we got a two-year comp plan coming up that's going to last for eight to 10 years. So when you look at the direction that the city's going to take for the next, so two years to develop the comp plan, it could go for eight to 10 years. There's a 10 to 12-year period, time period here that we're locking ourselves in as a council based on the decisions that we make. Well, the decisions we made on Tuesday, even though it's not completely solid because it was, we're going back to King County to revise a number that's going to be allocated to us. Well, and here's the, here's the rub for me. I think we made a huge mistake by going into a negotiation, starting at a higher number than we needed to. And so if you're going to go in on a high number, this is the logic then. I'm trying to use some logic here. If we go into a negotiation to get an allocation and we start at a high number, that's not the way I negotiate. I don't know if that's the way you guys negotiate, but we should be going in at the lowest number possible.
So there's several things at play for you with what I'm hearing. Right? It's both about, you know, that piece of the content. But there's also a piece about wondering where your fellow council members, you know, what they think about things. Right?
Well, and I'm wondering why they voted the way they did.
I think we're going to get off on a little bit of a tangent here. And it's, it feels a little unfair, frankly, if, you know, we have one council member who's kind of verbalizing there. If we don't give that opportunity to everyone else, it becomes a very lopsided conversation. But I also don't want to derail us from our agenda here. So, but I think that the, the door was just put open and it feels, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but it now feels like, you know, I feel like I need to respond now. Right? Which was that we did, there was a motion to have the lowest target. Right? The three of us voted for that, but it was voted down by the council. And your motion was 1,697. That motion failed. So we had to do something else. So we did go in, tried to do the lowest number. Didn't, it didn't work. So.
Thanks, Kristy. Dave, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to recommend that the council think about this particular discussion. And maybe you could put a little running toe, you know, a list of topics that might come up that aren't suitable for discussion today. Because we, we need to work through this process. And tomorrow, we need to work through another part of the process, which is critically important to how the city is going to function over, over the next year and flow into the, the following year. And that's the work plan and the calendar associated with it. And we need to stay on track for those things in this process. But this, this discussion here could be a good impetus for another workshop like this that follows. Because we're not going, we don't have the time, the breadth to get into these things today. But on another day, that we commit to doing that, or you all commit to doing that, so that you can work through some of those differences.
Sure. So I have, I like calling it a bike rack, but it's the classic parking lot, things that are topics. And is this a topic that you want to take some time, perhaps later tomorrow? Or find a different time to talk through?
Sure.
And, and what would you label it?
Thank you.
Because it's coming back to us. It's coming back.
Awesome. What I was trying, and thank you for that. And I appreciate the fact that we're trying to, you know, sometimes we have to give enough of an example so that we can create some learning. I just wanted to kind of point out, though, the learning piece and the, the emotion that took place, even in that example. And part of that is, again, how are we framing things as questions to each other? Right? It's like in question six, you know, what do you think about that? Rather than kind of going at it with, with, like, you know, the label. And I think that that was where the energy changed in the conversation. And that's what, that's what I was trying to kind of get to the point in checking in. It's like, what was the impact? And be mindful, because that's not the impact that you want with each other, that you really want to create the space where you're listening to each other and you're debating at a higher level, at a deeper level. Maybe it's a little of both. Right? When you, when you can really, truly have your, have your voice heard.
That's, it's similar in the example that I was trying to, to say earlier. Misperception is reality. Misperception also creates a reality. And it's incumbent upon each of us to get, get past that so that we can see the other person's reality and use that as a self-assessment in how we go about solving issues or addressing a problem.
Yep. Exactly. So there's two tools that I think are really useful to help us in that. One is called the ladder of inference and one is the reframe. Are you, just a show of hands, how many of you might be familiar with this tool called the ladder of inference? Ooh, yay, we got to talk about that. All right. So. Guess I kind of have to be seen on this a little bit. Hey, you've got a handout on it, too. So maybe I. So you've got this ladder, right? The, the whole, the whole idea around this is, is how we take in information and how we apply meaning to it and how we move to action. And sometimes we go really quickly up the ladder. So the ladder, if there was a video camera, right? And there is, in a way, in the room. Right? That's usually how I kind of start to introduce it. The very bottom rung of the ladder, if you have that handout in front of you, is one that's, is if there's just observable data. And every one of us consciously and unconsciously are taking data from this experience. Right? Things that you're paying attention to. The sounds, the, the movement, the gestures, the words that people are using. And we are selecting data from that. We initiate, then we immediately move into adding meaning. Right? From there, we draw conclusions about what we thought and what I'm experiencing. And then I'm drawing a conclusion around that, moving into adopting beliefs and taking action. So an example, team I was working with, taking action. This team, this, this woman was, she was going to leave the team. Right? Taking action. And the leaders of that team said, oh, my gosh, we don't want to lose this talent. Why, why does she want to leave the team? Right? So when I went and huddled with her and asked her and checked in with her, she said something like, I'm leaving because nobody respects me. Right? And when I heard, and she, and I said, well, tell me more. She starts to kind of describe the situation. It was really quite painful to hear her comments around, about what her experience was on this team. And for her, you know, that top rung of the ladder is when you're taking action. But as I was listening to her, when I'm hearing words like, they always, you know, they never have time for me. They always disregard my input. I just can't, I just can't take it anymore, kind of a thing. Right? So I then, I'm trying to understand, well, can you give me some more examples? So like, why do you, why do you believe that they always do something? Right? I was trying to kind of understand some of her beliefs. And as she starts to describe her story, so it's like, well, I'm going to go in and talk to one of my colleagues, you know, go into their office space. And they didn't have, you know, they didn't have time for me. And, you know, I, I just felt like I wasn't a valued member of the team. Right? That's the, that's the meaning that she added. Right? So again, I'm trying to go down the ladder by asking why questions. Help me understand type questions. Right? Why do you think that? Show me, show me that. And so the data that she was selecting, right, and adding meaning to, is that she would, and she was, okay, in this team, we just did the Myers-Briggs. So talk about synergy in this. She was on a team, she was a flaming extrovert, as we might call it. She was like the full points you have on extroversion. And everyone else on her team was somewhere from the moderate to the very, you know, strong introverts. And when someone with that kind of energy came barging into their office space, the data that she was collecting is someone was taking, you know, was working. And it would take them forever to turn around to greet her. Right? Or she would stop them on the way to a meeting because she had an idea and wanted to talk about it with them. And those of you that prefer introversion, if someone's stopping you on the way to the meeting, it's really disruptive. Right? Because you're thinking about the meeting. Meetings are kind of energy draining. So she, she was taking those data points. You don't have time for me. You, you know, you're giving me these funny looks when I'm walking into your office. She just had no idea what her impact was. So the whole idea around the ladder, right, is we gave her, like, giving her different kinds, she had, she selected that data, but she had to add different meaning to it. She was, she was in this, you see this reinforcing loop? We have a tendency, right? It's self-fulfilling prophecies. I'm going to select the data that reinforces my beliefs. If I'm going to walk into a group and I think that they like me, I've got to look for things that show that they like me. Right? And I have been in some, you know, sometimes in training or, or doing something and, and I have this belief, I'm a little worried and I think that people don't like me. I'm going to look for those moments when someone's looking down and writing and then I'm going to start to think to myself like, see? I'm not saying anything valuable and they're looking down and they're doing this and they're doing that. And I'm just re, I'm stressing myself out by doing that kind of stuff. And then I can take action. There have been so many opportunities to use the ladder in my family system, in groups. And I just wanted to ask you, you know, can you see moments when you have been toward the top of your ladder? When you are sometimes looking for data to reinforce a belief system? When sometimes we are in the process of taking action? When really there could have been different ways to interpret the data? So the gift in this then as a group is how do you use this with each other? You know? Sometimes you can see that someone's going to the top of their ladder and there's usually some sort of emotional response. Right? And, you know, it's, it's the moments when you say, well, you know, Wendy's always like this or so-and-so's always like that. Again, that's top of the ladder language. So we're not inviting an opportunity for there to be different ways of interpreting that or drawing conclusions or adding meanings. It's like, well, you know what? I was at that meeting, too. And I heard it asked differently. Right? So that's part of the gift. And that's why in terms of learning from differences, bouncing this off of each other and inviting each other to the conversation and helping us see different ways of looking at it or selecting different data is useful. So what do you think? Have you done something like this? Have you caught yourself when you were toward the top of the ladder at some point and helped yourself move down?
Well, isn't it kind of human nature to consistently try to find information that only aligns with your belief system? I, I think it takes a lot of energy to go outside that. I mean, conscious energy. Because it's really easy to find up the people, you know, that align with your belief systems, I think. And to consciously challenge that, to go outside it, it isn't nearly as comfortable and as straightforward. Unless, unless, like, for, like, in my case, I'm able to just separate myself. If I could separate myself from the thing, then, then I can look at it much more objectively. I'm able to pick apart maybe a tiny foundational piece or something that, that I could see, well, okay, there's a point here. Because typically, our decisions are complex. It isn't, it isn't one thing. It isn't like one number. There's a lot of complexity, for example, into that. And so I think that for me, it would be tearing apart decision and looking at the individual building blocks and determining, what does this piece mean? And if we connect that piece, what's the outcome? What's the unintended consequence? Now let's plug in the next piece. And so it's stepping it all the way back to inanimate objects so that it's not a label. It's just a number. It's a, and it represents this. It's a, and it represents this, and, and if we did it, if you, and allow it to play out. The other part we don't do is we don't imagine. We don't imagine. We don't think about, well, what if we did this? Then could it be this? And could it connect to that? And then could we have a completely different future or outcome that's better than we anticipated? Or, or just different? Okay, so if we take this piece away, now what happens? So I don't think we do Legos. We don't do intellectual Legos of building and creating different pieces from the same building blocks. Because I think there's ways to do that, to deconstruct. So that, that's sort of my point of view, I guess.
Yeah. I think that's healthy, to do that, to invite that different way of, of looking at it, you know? Can do that very consciously as a group.
It's hard to do in a council, because that's not what your agenda says. You know? You're, I think that's hard. I, how do, is there a way to build that in?
I think the only way to build it in, well, let me say that differently. A way to build that in, an option, is it, is it takes more time. And unfortunately, you're not, the, the, the pleasure or the, what's the word I'm looking for? The privilege, the opportunity to take more time is extremely limited. It's limited by your individual abilities to put more time in. It's, it's constrained by staff's time to put things more together, and to then spend time together to do a more forensic analysis of what the issues are. So it becomes more incumbent, I think, on each of you to do that as best you can individually and/or, and then identifying it so that staff can try to assist before it comes down to these decision point times. And, and it's challenging for everybody, because from staff's standpoint, and this is generalities, okay? But we're bureaucrats. The system has to have structure, it has to work a certain way, and we have to do it within certain time constraints to meet the planning calendar, to meet all of a sudden this deadline that like pops up in a, in a morning, that you're going to meet that afternoon. A whole bunch of unknowns, but those that we do have knowns on, we, we have these constraints placed upon us. And it's just difficult, because then there's the establishment of trust and what's, what's done and provided, and then you folks have the tough job of trying to analyze it as, as best you can, synthesize it, and then come to a conclusion, and then go, okay, here you go, decision's made, let's move on. Oh, nuts, I've got another stack of, another packet that's coming that I have to catch up on. So it is, it is very difficult. It's, it's not impossible, communities do it. But it really is incumbent, and especially when you haven't been at it very long. And, and the three new council members are all climbing a steep and slippery mountain. You know, I think of analogies or pictures, you know, it's just got a lot of shale, you, you step and it slides, and, and then you get a firm grip, and you get to the next step, and then it slips again. Just very tough, so I, I don't know what else to say.
Well, I, and I understand what you're saying, and I, it completely makes sense to me, absolutely. And I always, I always look, so I wonder what else I could do instead. So I look for the alternative, you know, what else, what else are we not thinking about that we could deploy, that would be lightweight, that would be meaningful, and actually help maybe get partway there? Because I can, I can live with partway. And I wonder, are the, are our commissions, you know, a playground for us potentially? Are we able to toss them an idea or a concept about a what-if, a what-if scenario, for example? And, and see, is that a place where experimentation could take place, where that could bubble up?
My, my feedback, oh, I thought it turned off for a second, is that, yes, but I urge the council to think about structure and framework, so that if you do delegate it to a commission, that there are pretty strict parameters, because if, if you don't tell them, they won't know. And it's like employees, you, everybody wants to do the best job they can, is the way I look at it. And if you don't set priorities for them, they'll set their own priorities. And are those priorities going to go this way, or do a crazy Ivan this way? So it is possible to do that. There are committees that you could establish. But understand, too, that that takes staff support. So I have to put in the plug for budget and, and staffing, to be able to give it the support. But it can be done, certainly with a couple council people and the staff support to get tasks done. Just takes time and commitment, and, and that's, those are precious commodities for everyone here, I know, because you have life as well.
Energy level is reaching its peak, I think, or it's past its peak, is a better way to say it. Yeah. Which is, which is, which is okay, I understand that. And so, just to kind of bring this, you know, that one piece to closure, and maybe this piece, and then we'll just try to, you know, generate some learning from the afternoon and move forward. But my hope in this learning from differences, that we think about the shift of, learning from differences doesn't mean that I need to convey my thoughts to the other. Learning from differences is that first verb, learning. How am I learning from others? What do I need to let in so that, you know, I can learn more about myself? Because really, when we learn from difference, you learn more about yourself, and you're thinking around this. But in the process of doing that, you're really respecting the other. When we give people, you know, the floor, and you've given, you know, you're inviting their perspective on, you know, your, the response to your question, right? So that's very useful and very affirming if you ask the questions rather than, well, debate, right? We're looking for that, for that dialogue piece. The ladder of inference and the on-being-wrong are two tools, things just to kind of remind ourselves that, and, and just this last piece that we've brought up, that sometimes, very naturally, human beings will look for things that keep us safe. And that, and that's things that, keeping the data that I believe in, and I will look for things to kind of, to, to remind myself of that. And I, we have a tendency sometimes to disregard other data. And so that's why the reminder of the ladder of inference, and you guys now have a word that you could use with each other, saying, are we at the top of our ladder? You know, should we be looking at some different ways of looking at the data? Is there other data that we need to be looking at, right? So sometimes, just even using that word could be a reminder to, to say, e, e, even for our own self-check. Sometimes I need that reminder about, you know, sometimes I get on my opinions, it's like, ah, am I modeling what I'm supposed to be doing? Like getting back and making sure that I'm open to new things. It's okay for me to have my opinion, I'm not saying not, but if we jump to opinion without exploration, it's not, it's not easy on a group. So with that, bringing that piece to, to closure, my hope is that in that handout, perhaps in those processes, that you've learned a few things in that, and that we've had some fun with the Myers-Briggs, and you got to learn a little bit more about each other. And the handouts in that, that can continue to be useful to you. I just want to see if there's anything in particular right now that you want to voice that, maybe we just kind of go over what the expectations are for tomorrow. And I would invite, you know, Mike, maybe, you know, putting you on point that I'm probably going to ask you to maybe give us a prelude of, preview, not prelude, whatever, just give us a glimpse of, of tomorrow, and how we can bring our best selves to it, and then where we have some space for parking lot things at the end of the day, stuff like that. So, is that fair to give it to Mike next? Okay, Mike, you're on.
Sure. So tomorrow morning, we will, excuse me, start off with our priorities. So as the council knows, we sent out the list, or excuse me, we sent out a form a couple weeks back, asking for your top two priorities. And we thankfully received all responses from all council members. So we're going to kind of open up the floor to begin with, and allow council members about five minutes each to talk about their priorities and why they're important to them, and allow some discussion among the group. And then we're going to jump into the city work plan. So we did send that out in advance, I believe it was yesterday. So if you have a chance to look at that, that would be great, and to bring your questions to that discussion, because we will have directors on the line and who are able to answer any questions about those work plan items. So that's kind of a quick summary of what we'll be doing for the priorities and work plan piece.
You know, whenever that part is done, right, and we just don't know when that is, depending on your, your conversation and, and your questions, right? It'll be a beautiful time, because the city director of the different departments will be here, and you can engage and ask the questions that you want, so that you feel like you have the information that you, that you need moving forward. And if there's something that emerges during the day that we need to kind of write on the parking lot list, we can do that. And then we can invite, if there's something that you want to use that time for, depending on how much time there is, the intention is to go from nine to noon, break for lunch, and then go until three at the latest. And so, is there anything that you want to ask or check in about? Or any comments, Scott, or Dave, or Debbie? Okay.
I would, I would urge you, go home, take a look at that packet. Look at the work plan. I said earlier, but I believe in the philosophy of the Department of Redundancy Department, so I will repeat myself a number of times. Tomorrow's really important, so that you can identify further and articulate further for the leadership team of what your priorities are. But please keep, keep in mind that we're just starting on this journey, and the caravan's been moving along. Use some analogies, the caravan's been moving along. It's a lot of priorities in the work plan have been identified, and they've been budgeted for by some of you and some of your previous colleagues. And as that's coming along, it's stopping at this waste station, and it's going to take on supplies or water or more tasks. And there's only so much capacity that it can take on. But it's important, it's critically important that the tasks going forward be completed, if at all possible tomorrow, so that your staff has a firm direction on what they are going to be working on to fulfill the council's agenda and priorities for this next year. And then also identifying what might then be important issues that they need to begin to pay attention to, and add on to that as it comes into next year's budget process, which starts, for the staff, midsummer through August, they're assembling a lot, September is getting refined, and October, now you're players into that. So think long-term, think with some vision in this process, because part of the things that are your priorities might fit well, and the timing might be immediate or almost immediate, a little bit later on in the year. And then some of them might be things that you can identify that, okay, I've got a better picture, I can see where that might fit into the latter part of the year, or certainly, completion of these tasks will be then the priority for next year. So this type of a workshop, this retreat, is critically important for you to identify for the staff, what's out there, confirm where they're at, so they get the direction and can stay engaged, and you can get the most effectiveness, the most efficiently possible out of the staff, because we all know, things are going to come up during the year. And, and, and there's straws that get added, and, you know, you don't want to break the camel's back, but some things will just need to be addressed, some things will need to be pulled back. So that's part of the discussion tomorrow, and keep that in mind going through the year, so that they can complete their tasks as best they can for what direction you're setting for them. Scott, you got anything?
The only thing that I want to add on to that is that, you know, as the staff is going out and doing work, we need to know that the council knows what we're doing and, and has blessed it officially. And that's what the work plan does. And it's helpful both for us to be able to go out and do that work, but also when they're out in the community doing projects or talking to folks, it's very, very helpful to be able to circle back and say, this project is on the council work plan, we are going to ask you, we're going to bring it back once it's finalized here, we're going to bring it back in the form of a resolution. The work plan will be attached, so that there is formality to saying, this is what we're going to be working on. So then we know we're spending resources, staff time, consultant time, everything else, those things that we are working on, we know that when we come to you, you're not going to give us a blank stare, like, what, what are we, what are we doing here? But that that's something that has already been, at least the starting point is in the work plan, and then when we come, we're going to try to reference back to, you know, whatever that is, so that we are consistent across the board. So we, I will say, I really appreciate all of your time. I know this is a lot of time on top of your daily lives to come in and do this stuff, and this is really critically important for us to be able to better understand how to, how to work with you and present you and provide you information, so that you can make decisions easier. I was looking at the ladder of inference, just as an example, and I was looking at it and I was thinking, you know, in essence, we get all the way up to drawing conclusions for you when we bring stuff in the packet to you, and by design. But we've already done those first things, and then you're stuck with the, trying to sort of adopt beliefs and take action all in one fell swoop. And recognize, that's a tough jump to make. And so the more we can understand and the better provided information in, in a format that works for all of you, then the easier it is to be able to make decisions, and, and we can move forward. So that's kind of where my mind is at, in terms of, this is really helpful for me, it's helpful for me to understand how all of you think and process information and receive information, because then we can work on our end to try to bring things that, that try to fit those, to help you better and make easier decisions. So, thank you for all the time today and tomorrow. And like Dave said, this is really helpful and critical for our staff moving forward from this point.
Thanks, I think likewise, thank you to staff who's attending here today, too. This is much of a time commitment for you all, probably more so because you had to prepare for us. We just kind of come and sit and listen and learn, and so thank you as well.
Awesome. Well, you, in a way, you've started the checkout process. I'd just love to have everybody's reflections on the afternoon, and then you call on the next person. So Scott, I don't know if there's anything more that you would add, you're welcome to, and then maybe you just call on the next person to go.
I am going to call on the mayor.
I don't know that I have any distinct reflections, other than, you know, obtaining my fellow council members and the limited staff that we have up there. Their personality types does give a roadmap for best possible interactions in the future, for communications, and also understanding maybe the position that they're coming from based on who they are.
Who do you want to call on?
Amy.
I guess I would echo Mayor Malcho's comments. It's good to hear, it's, it's good to see how other people process information and how they like to receive information. That's, I mean, that's just one learning I had today.
Thanks. Who do you want to call on?
Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask questions. Thanks. I'll work on that. Karen Moran.
I learned, I think we were pretty close when we were trying to figure out where people were. And we guessed pretty close. And so I'm extrovert, introvert, and I think we did pretty well. Anyway, so, and a big huge thank you to staff, because I know this is a huge extra lift for you guys. Although I really wanted to see what you guys' personality thing was. I mean, I think that would've been kind of fun. So I, I do think it's interesting, because it does tell a lot on, on how people take information. And the other Karen.
Well, I'm grateful for the time, so I'll just start with that. I'm grateful for the staff taking the time and for the people in the room. I felt like people were sharing real bits of themselves, and I appreciate that, because that, you know, that makes you more vulnerable to a large extent, but it makes us stronger as a council. So I appreciate you. I've seen two episodes of Ted Lasso. And I think that's all I need to say, and I'll turn it to Dave.
Well, I too wanna share my thanks for the council's commitment, and recognize Wendy. Again, thank you for all the work you, you've done for us today, that you will do tomorrow, that you've done in preparing, working with the council on getting us to this point, and working to get us through tomorrow, is very reflective on the work you did with the staff and the council last year. It's critically important, because I think we, we set a pretty good course, but now the, the new council gets to evaluate that, and, and the tools that we put together, does that work for you? Because that's what's important, too, is the system, is it, is it working for you? Staff has adapted to it, but it's adaptable, and we need to be flexible. So thanks for everybody's commitment, thank you for being open. And I'd call on Kaylee.
Yeah, it's good being all together, seeing you guys in person, this is the first time. And I think we could use probably some group therapy. I think our communication isn't where I would like it to be, but I think this is like, at least a starting point, so.
Awesome. All right, I'll just do my quick checkout. I come at this, at the end of the day, with deep appreciation for everybody that made the room possible. So big shout out to the IT team, and to Debbie and Mike, and Lita for your work, Dave and Scott also with the agenda design, but also for the six team members, the council team, I use that word, but you know you're council members, but just the foresight that you had about what you needed, and you put that out there, and then you brought yourself to this space. And we had some fun this afternoon. I loved watching just some of the lightness happen with the group, and there's just so much possibility here, and there's so much work ahead for you, that I'm grateful to be a part of your process in this journey. And tomorrow, looking forward to helping you with the, the conversations around the work plan, and we're gonna have a great day. So thank you, everybody. And look, it's a few minutes before five, so talk about the performance metric that we're, yes, before time. All right, have a great rest of your day, and we'll see you tomorrow morning.